This program is brought to you by Cable Franchise V's and generous donations from viewers like you.
This is a meeting of the Amherst Town Council. It is January 25th, 2021. And seeing that we have a quorum of the council present, I am going to call the meeting to order at 6:33. I am going to read the ground and then I'm going to be calling on people to make sure you can hear us and we can hear you. Governor Baker's March 12th order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law allows us to hold this virtual town council meeting. I will call on each councillor by name and at that time they should unmute their mic and say present. This will indicate that they can hear us and we can hear them. Please remember to mute your mic after saying present. So I'm going to begin and Shalini Ballmail.
Present.
Alyssa Brewer.
Present.
Pat DeAngelis.
Present.
Darcy Dumont. Hold on one second. Oh, please bring Darcy in from the attendees. Okay. And I'll come back and check with her. Lynn Griesmer is present, Mandy Jo Hanke.
Present.
Dorothy Pam.
Present.
George Ryan.
Present.
Kathy Shane.
Here.
Steve Schreiber.
Present.
Andy Steinberg.
Present.
And Sarah Schwartz.
Present.
And Darcy Dumont is now in the room. Can you hear us, Darcy?
I'm here.
Thank you so much. So we are. This meeting includes audio, video, and is available live on Amherst Media. It is also being recorded. There is no chat room for this meeting. If you have a technical issue, please make sure that Athena and I both know so that we can address it in the meeting, either make note that you were interrupted or help you get reconnected. Discussion may be suspended if we have a technical issue and Athena will be monitoring councillor connections along the way. We're going to start with some announcements. They're shown on your screen. I'm not going to read them, but I do want to call attention specifically. Sean, are we ready with the announcements? Okay, thank you. I do want to call attention specifically to the February 4th meeting of the school committee. This is a meeting with residents at their request. It's at 6 o'clock PM and all councillors are invited to attend it although we are not, it is not one of our meetings. The link for the meeting will be able to be found on the school website, I'm told, as of tomorrow. I also then want to go to one other announcement and that is actually going to be that we're, instead of doing a full COVID update, we've asked Emma Dragon, as our Director of Health, give us a quick update on COVID vaccinations. And we will not have questions because frankly, this is an ever-moving target and the answer to that question today may change tomorrow or even tonight. So if we could now go on to the public service announcement that Emma is doing and there's a slide presentation, Sean.
Is it my turn to go? I wasn't quite sure if that was.
Emma, I'm just putting your slides up now.
Oh, great, alright. It was like that moment of silence.
You want to fill the dead air?
Yeah. Let's all do a mindful minute of breathing before.
That's a great idea.
Hmm. So I know there's just, can everyone hear me alright? I'm not quite sure how my connection is here. Great. So there is just so much going on with public health and just like how Lynn said, the information is changing day to day and even hour to hour again. It's very reminiscent for me for being back in March and February in public health with how the speed of the information that we're getting all the time. So here we have the first slide, which is just that we're going to do a special update with how COVID vaccine distribution is going in Massachusetts and how it's impacting us here locally in the town of Amherst. Next slide. So here we can see the phase distribution timeline in the state of Massachusetts. This is a really nice visual that's available at that mass.gov site about COVID vaccines, which can give you some overview on when we're going into those. And at the bottom of this infographic, it does give us some estimated timeframes for when we are in each phase, but certainly those timeframes are subject to adjustment based on availability of the vaccine. Next slide. So right now we are full force in Phase 1 group of distribution, which is including all of the individuals and groups within Phase 1. It started with those COVID-facing healthcare workers, then those long-term care facility resident and workers, first responders, which included EMS, fire, police, and 911 dispatchers, congregate care settings, home-based healthcare workers, and then finally those non-COVID-facing healthcare workers, meaning healthcare workers that aren't knowingly taking care of actively sick patients with COVID at that time. So these are all of the many different groups that we're addressing with a Phase 1 distribution. Now, next slide, coming very soon and just now is this great map on the state site where individuals, currently it's only for Phase 1 individuals, but where you can use this interactive map on the state website to find a vaccination site near you. And they're trying to make it helpful with all of these different colored stars so you can know what kind of site they are. But I know sometimes when we try to make things really specific, it can kind of look a little cluttered. But as you can see over here at, to the left of this picture of this map, you can see the green star over Amherst, which is the general vaccine site at UMass. And then you can start to see a little bit of yellow under there and that's US, which is a local vaccination site, which is open to select cities and towns. And information for this map, it's currently only available for individuals in Phase 1 distribution, but they are going to be expanding it to the other phases throughout the distribution. So residents will be able to see what vaccine sites are live or available at that time. And I put that link at the bottom of this slide to help us out. Next slide. So so far, we have done an amazing job with vaccine distribution and the amount that we were allocated. We've been, we stood up a site at the Bang Center and we ran dates from January 11th to 15th and also another day on January 22nd. A total of 692 vaccines were distributed. All of the eligible phases, individuals were those Phase 1 individuals. And I just can't say enough how this has really been possible with a partnership of our fire departments, public safety, us here in the health department as well, not just locally, but inter-agency with the multiple towns around us and in Hampshire County. And that we had a great experience having the COVID ambassadors come and assist to our clinics to help and do some education because this is just such a trying time. And I think I heard some, I know I've heard people say that, you know, why don't I just stop by the site to see if there's some extras or maybe at the end of the day? And some of it's education and some of it is just really great relationship building. But those COVID ambassadors, my goodness, that's such a wonderful program. And our paramedics are vaccinating alongside our school nurses and our lead public health nurse, Jen Brown. And it's just a really amazing team that's come together during this time. Next slide. So vaccines moving forward, I know this is all everyone's big question. I mean, it's my question too, as information kind of changes day to day. So right now we are administering the Moderna vaccine, which many people know, like the Pfizer vaccine. You need two doses to be able to be fully vaccinated on their schedule. And us as a town is very prepared to continue as a site for broader distribution. This might be at the Bang Center or at the high school. We're considering the high school as another site as well. Our plan has a capacity to do up to 2,500 vaccines a week if we were to go to the high school. But certainly we can have all of these plans and energy and enthusiasm, but without the materials, without the supply in the supply chain coming down to us, we're really limited to that. Last night we were notified and some people might have seen in the news today or by Governor Baker's statement earlier today that there is a supply shortage to the state of Massachusetts at this time with vaccine distribution and that right now local health departments are going to be limited to an allocation of 100 vaccines a week through the end of February. We do want to also recognize that UMass as that general vaccine site is a regional site that's available to our residents. There are also plans of a mass size vaccination site, which is being planned to start at the Eastfield Mall in the next week or so. So there's more sites coming online. They also want us to encourage our residents to further communicate with their primary care providers or there's also going to be pharmacies that will be carrying the vaccine as well. So there's going to be multiple different venues where people will be able to access the vaccine. But us on the public health side, we're ready to go if we're given the supply because we want to be there for our communities in need. Next slide. So frequently asked questions, I know, oh my goodness, Mary Beth and Jen Reynolds and her staff at the Council on Aging are getting questions all the time and I know we are as well. In addition to the COVID Concerns Line, Angela Mills and Jen Wilston, they are just rock stars. So many of the questions that we get, here's just a few. Seniors over 65 of age are in Phase 2. Yes, you are. So the order for Phase 2 distribution is in order of who goes first as what they're listed of priority. That was the word I was looking for. So the first step in Phase 2 is those individuals that will be 75 and older. And then it will go down to the seniors, the wise individuals that are over 65 years of age or individuals that identify as having two or more medical comorbidities. And then after that, the third step is all of the great infrastructural workers, those teachers, food workers, grocery stores, DPW, all of our inspectors and public health workers. There's that huge group at the end of Phase 3, at the end of Phase 2 for that. Caretakers and translators, of course, they can accommodate those that are seeking the vaccine. We've already had that on occasion. We are working on making sure that we will be able to provide notification, education in multiple languages. We're also working with, I know Mary Beth has been communicating with many town groups so that way we can engage our different populations that speak multiple languages so that way we can meet them where they're at and see our communities in need. And the final thing here is that home healthcare workers are eligible for the vaccine at this time. That did just change last week as all Phase 1 is now open and we're happy to have them register. We already have had a lot of local home healthcare workers come to our vaccine site. And that's not just home healthcare workers that work under an agency or a company. Those could be a family member that takes care of an elderly family member or a disabled family member. Those are also people that can identify as home healthcare workers. Next slide. How will I know when I can get the vaccine? So Mary Beth Ogilovitz made this great number, this 413-259-3038 number. It's a specific line, that's a dedicated line that she's made, started to make a wait call list to be able to reach out to when the vaccine comes and when we have more information. We are also going to engage and do promotion by using all of the traditional media outlets that Brianna uses when any kind of widespread notification goes out. And then also one thing that we're really happy to announce is that we're going to be doing a call-in show, if you will, on Tuesday, February 2nd at 7:00 PM. I'm very excited about this for a Q&amp;A, a great opportunity to have a table and a platform with myself as the health director, with Mary Beth Ogilovitz from the senior services there and then some Cooley Dickinson medical professionals to be, to join us as well as experts in this field and to be able to maybe answer some questions in terms of how maybe Cooley Dickinson might be able to help support our local efforts as well. And that Zoom will, we will be sending out once it's available. Next slide. And I wanted to end this with these links that individuals can find regularly updated information at. I think one of the challenges with the information changing so frequently is that, you know, I'm looking at this stuff many times throughout the day and even that can change during the day when I'm looking at it. So I really try to use these state resources, these state links to give the best information. We also update our local Amherst COVID-19 site with information when we're able to and when we have testing, not testing, sorry, when we're going to be having a vaccine clinic out. But this link in terms of when can I get the COVID vaccine, that's great for the phased updates. They try to update that on Tuesdays and Thursdays because they're constantly evaluating those groupings for priority. And then also just overview in terms of the entire vaccination program throughout the entire state is that second link. And that's all I got for now.
Thank you so much, Emma.
Oh, you're welcome. I'm so glad I was able to come.
Thank you for staying on top of this and all the work that you and your colleagues are doing. We're going to move on to another piece that I want to make sure we announce and that people understand it. The Governance Organization Legislation Committee has asked that we add the feature of a clock for timing both public comment and councillor comments. And so Sean and Athena have worked on that and I've asked them to demonstrate that at this point. So basically what Sean has done is he's put the clock in his surface and as long as we don't keep seeing his head or the posted over his film, we'll see the number so that it will basically count down from three minutes and you will know when three minutes is up. Okay, we'll only be using that during public comment and during councillor comments. Okay, we're going to move on then to general public comment. So this is the only public comment this evening. Residents are welcome to express their views for up to three minutes and based on the number of people who wish to speak. The council will not engage in a dialogue or comment on a matter raised during general public comment. And so I'm going to ask people who would like to make public comment, raise their hands. Okay, and the way we do this is we invite you into the room and you into the panelist area and we ask you to state your name and where you live and then you proceed and so forth. So we start with Erin Hayden. Please come into the room, state your name and where you live.
Hi, well, I'm Erin Hayden and I live in District 5 down here in South Amherst. I guess I'm flattered that I get to try out, be the first one to try out the clock. This is an exciting update. Anyway, it's good to speak to all about the improvements the town is considering for the Pomeroy Road West Street intersection. I chaired the Transportation Advisory Committee and wanted to take a moment of public comment to talk about the planning for this intersection since you'll all be looking at it a little bit later and to consider its reverence. The intersection between the arterial West Street and the residential Pomeroy Lanes in the middle of a growing village center has been thought about for a long time and planning its improvement has been the subject of requests for funding before. The community has grown quite a bit since the traffic control and non-automotive access for this intersection was designed many years ago. We don't do intersections like that anymore when we can help it. I don't know if you've ever been through it. You see, it's a dreadful place to try to cross. There are many new families joining the community that are within walking distance of the services that the village center provides and the amount of traffic on West Street continues to grow. As we move through the planning for this intersection, oh, I heard a comment. I wrote this out so I could just like go through it. As we move through the planning for this intersection, the Transportation Advisory Committee is hopeful that the priority on the design and the priority of the basis of design for the work shifts from one of, shifts towards the community's safe and comfortable use of the intersection and away from the old idea of speeding more cars through. At the District 5 meeting, some of you heard from neighbors in this community on the strong desire for safe and I want to add attractive pedestrian crossing here. The idea is that when this intersection was built, you know, 50 years ago, it really was designed to move cars and ignored people as they often did in the day. And it's very important that we change that, that we get back to the pedestrians. We feel it is important that the nearby intersections are kept in mind as well as this work goes forward. All of those intersections face the same challenge of safety, supporting more people from the community as they walk and bike across and along West Street. I'm going to stop now because my time is running out and I'm going to look forward to seeing the presentation a little bit later. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Erin, and thanks for your work on the tech.
Yeah.
Harry Mullin, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Hi, my name is Harry Mullin and I'm on Northeast Street in District 4. I'm speaking tonight to ask the council to consider adding the following language to the resolution about the insurgents on Capitol Hill. I'm going to start with, by quoting the part that I imagined it would be added to. So be it further resolved, we call on the town manager to condemn the actions of the insurrectionists and enact practices, behaviors, and policies to ensure that planned peaceful demonstrations by Black, Brown, and Indigenous people are responded to by law enforcement and public safety personnel in an anti-racist manner, consistent with the freedoms guaranteed by the Constitution and exhibit no greater force, no greater show of force than is routinely used in peaceful demonstrations by white people. I'd like you to add and ensure that no Amherst town employee who has sworn to uphold the laws and constitution of the United States or the Commonwealth of Massachusetts participated in the violence and siege of the US Capitol on January 6th, 2021. And be it further resolved, we call upon the Amherst Police Department Chief Livingstone to affirm their commitment to civilian oversight of policing in Amherst as well as their commitment to protecting citizens in the democratic process. I sent this earlier and I got a clarification, which is why I took out one part about keeping the two officer positions frozen. And I got a response from Councillor DeAngelis saying that if a town employee did something illegal in DC on January 6th, it's the purview of whatever law enforcement groups that are investigating and prosecuting the people involved is not a town action and therefore cannot be added to the resolution. I personally disagree because there are standards of conduct that law enforcement and town officials must be held to. It seems to me as an outsider looking in to be very commonplace for people's conduct to be questioned by media and other folks. So it seems reasonable as the town council, who's in my understanding are the current supervisors of most of the town, that you could look into the current conduct of your employees. And then I also wanted to add, because I'm a little confused on the, who can freeze the police positions. It seems like they are moving forward as being frozen until the CSWG can finish their report. I would like to speak in favor of that.
It's Terry. And Bertie is the next person and state your full name and where you live.
Hi, I'm Bertie Newman. I am a high school student in District 4 and I'm speaking as a member of Defund 413 Amherst. I'm really glad the town is putting out a resolution in response to the insurrection at the Capitol. In terms of the freeze on the police officer positions, I am following Terry in supporting that. I hope that town council members support the motion to extend that freeze today so that they can get the feedback that they'd initially envisioned from the Community Safety Working Group. That seems really crucial. I also agree that to the extent that Amherst can look into their employees' conduct and ensure that no one was at the insurrection, I think that's really, I think that's really important. And I don't know all the legal stuff around it, but we saw that there was a version of the resolution that had that in there that was like, yeah, we're going to look into this and make sure nobody was there. And I am curious why that got removed and what it might look like to add it back in or to amend it and add it back in. So that, those are my comments for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Bertie. Glad you could join us. Myra Ross, please enter the room, state your name and where you live. Myra, you need to unmute. Thank you.
Okay, hi. I am here, oh, I'm Myra Ross, I live in District 4. I'm representing the Disability Access Advisory Committee. We sent a memo to you regarding the Pomeroy Lane intersection. And it's, for us, it's very crucial that you think along the lines that Erin Hayden already asked you to think along, thinking about pedestrian safety rather than just zooming cars through because it is a very busy crossing intersection and we are very concerned that, that it could end up being made like the Triangle Street Rotary Roundabout was made, which is very unsafe for visually impaired people, for blind people, for anybody who walks slowly because there's no way to slow the traffic. So I don't know yet what we want you to do, but I know that pedestrian safety and pedestrian safety for people with disabilities, including blindness and mobility impairments, has to be your paramount concern when you design the intersection rather than moving the cars through quickly.
Myra, thank you for your comment. Allegra. Please state your full name and where you live.
My name is Allegra Clark and I am a resident.
My name is Allegra Clark, and I am a resident of District Four. I am also speaking tonight in support of the Resolution Against the Insurrection. I thank you guys for taking a stand on that. I do think it's important for the public to know whether or not there were any Amherst officers involved. As we have seen reports, that there were local law enforcement personnel present at the Capitol on that day. And in addition, I would just ask that the Community Safety Working Group, which has been doing very good work trying to look at all the angles that it's been asked to tackle, be given the opportunity to fulfill their mission and ask that the extension that they're requesting is granted and that with that the two police officer positions will remain frozen until they're able to come up with some of the possible alternatives for policing in the town.
Allegra, thank you for your comments. Are there any other public comments at this time? Okay, seeing none, then we are going to return to the agenda and we're going to move on to the consent agenda, which tonight is quite short. But can we show it on the screen? Meantime, I will read the motion and look for a second. Just a reminder, the consent agenda, the following items were selected because they were considered to be routine, and it was reasonable to expect that they would pass with no controversy. To remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion later in the meeting, ask that it be removed when I list the consent agenda items. The request to remove does not require a second. The motion is to move the following items in printed motion and the printed motions thereunder and approve those items as a single unit. Suspension of Town Council Rules of Procedure Rule eight point four for Agenda Item Eight C, Amendments to the Town Manager Goals. This is so that we can pass either pass those tonight or not. The other two are minutes eleven A to C, approve, it's actually A to B, approval of minutes. December fifth, two thousand twenty, special town council meeting minutes. That was the four towns meetings. And December twenty first, two thousand twenty, regular town council meeting minutes. Is there a second?
Second, Ross.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hold on, I need to exit the whole screen and just see if there's any hands. Okay, then this requires a roll call vote. I'm going to begin with Alyssa Brewer.
Hi.
Pat De Angelis.
Hi.
Darcy Dumont. Darcy Dumont.
Sorry, yes.
And Griesmer is an I, Hanke.
Hi.
Dorothy Pam.
Hi.
Evan Ross.
Hi.
George Ryan.
Hi.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Sarah Schwartz.
Hi.
And Shalini Balmilam.
Yes.
The vote is thirteen for, none against, none abstained, and none absent. We are going to move on to the next item on our agenda. And this is a reworking of the agenda, so we have moved Item Seven A, the report from the Community Safety Working Group, forward. And before I call on Paul Bachman and Paul Wiley, Chair of the Community Safety Working Group, and Brianna Owen, Vice Chair, I also want to recognize the other members, some of whom are with us tonight in the audience. Tashina Bowman. Darius Cage. Deborah Ferreria. I'm going to just apologize for pronouncing that. Pat Onabaku. Russ Vernon Jones, Alicia Walker, and also thank Jennifer Moisten, who is the staff liaison. So with that, I'm going to also mention that the vote to extend the deadline and continue to freeze the positions will be later in the agenda. The purpose of this agenda item is to hear a report from the Public Safety Working Group. Paul, do you want to introduce further?
Yes, I will. Thank you very much. So later in the in the committee meeting, there will be a request to extend the deadline for delivering a report to extend to for two months. And that and there's also a contingency that we will hold those those two positions vacant until that is done as well. So that should be a clear understanding. So we're just holding everything and giving the working group more time. The working group's been a spectacular group working together and taking on a very large task. And I credit the leaders of the group, Mr. Wiley and Ms. Owen, and turn it over to them for their presentation. They've done a good job in putting the presentation together.
Okay, and would you please pull the presentation option and I'm going to forehead call soon as it comes.
Thank you. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
We want to thank the the town council for giving us this opportunity to update you on the work of the Community Safety Working Group. And thank you also for introducing all of us. We'd like for you to know that Ms. Owen and myself are here representing the entire group. And I want to echo the the comments already made that this group has been working extremely hard and putting in a lot of long hours already to begin what is a pretty daunting task, but something that's very doable in our eyes and very necessary for this town. Before we go any further, I just want to say that we we started our work at the end of November slash beginning of December, so we're we're about eight weeks into the the work of this group. And we're finding that the the volume of work coming in and the volume of of tasks that we have to do is part of is is behind some of the the request for an extension. I think we we're all committed to doing the work in the best possible way and and going to really deep dive at this. So we hope that that extension can be approved going forward. So on behalf of Ms. Owen and myself, thank you for having us here, and we can launch right into the the next slide. So this is coming from our original document, and the purpose of the Community Safety Working Group is twofold, twofold, to make recommendations on alternative ways of providing public safety services to the community and to make recommendations on reforms to the current organizational and oversight structures of the Amherst Police Department. You'll see as we go down further that there's a lot behind those two statements, and it comes in the form of the articulation of our charge, which is the, I believe, on the next slide.
On next slide, thank you.
So I think I'll just go to the first part. So you're I'm not, you know, monopolizing all the the airtime here, and I I want to defer to Ms. Owen to go to the second set of bullets beyond the first three. But we're planning to study the the complex issues of delivering community safety services currently provided through the police. We're recommending reforms at the culmination of our work to the current organizational and oversight structures. And we're examining existing town funding priorities for delivering community safety services. So all of these things in combination will be part of what we we submit at the the end of our our tenure as as a working group. Ms. Owen, maybe you want to go through the the next section?
So the working group is achieving this by learning from the previous work by work done by the town through previous studies and committees examining current public safety services and how they're delivered, reviewing policies, complaints, current training practices, exploring models of resident oversight of police departments, collecting data from lived experiences in Amherst, engaging the communities most impacted by police, by policing to develop alternatives and identify solutions to diagnose problems and investigating alternative models such as the Eugene Kahoots Crisis Assistance Helping Out on the Street and the Albuquerque Community Safety Alternative.
Thank you. We can move to the next slide. So the work thus far, I think, Ms. Owen, I'll go through the first five of these, and maybe you can do the last three. I I just want to say, too, I want to interject that we're moving through this at a fairly rapid pace, but we're hoping to leave a few moments certainly for you to ask any questions. And those things that we can answer tonight, we certainly will. However, if there's something that needs more work on our part, we will move that back to our working group and be happy to return those answers to the town council in a timely manner. So some of these things are very, you know, straightforward. We elected a chair and a vice chair, held eight meetings. Our agenda is public. And on the Amherst website, public comment is welcomed at the beginning of every meeting. Conducted research on policing at the state and national level. Attended webinars and viewed podcasts. And we've solicited and received additional resources such as articles, upcoming workshops, books, et cetera, from the community. I want to say, given that, I said when we first started, it was pretty slow, but now our our presence in the town and as a result of our two forums that we've already held, we're getting a lot of traction within our community. And we've been blessed by the amount of of input people are giving us. We've certainly been welcoming resources and suggestions, and the the town has has met that challenge completely. And we were happy to receive that and internalize it in our work. So Ms. Owen?
Of course. Outside of our research, we've also been communicating with the Amherst Police Department. So we've put together a list of questions so we can learn more about their policies, practices, and different information that we feel will lead our work. We've received those responses and requested additional information. We have done two public forums on two separate dates to hear lived experiences from the community with the Amherst Police Department and Safety Services. And we've asked that the community gives us their input on what they'd like to see in reform. And we've we have also created a survey online for people who couldn't make it for the forum to the forum so that they can remain anonymous but still provide feedback for our work through lived experiences and suggestions for alternative or alternative safety services.
Thank you. Can you move that forward?
So this is a copy of the flyer that we put together for our two separate forums. And Ms. Moisten was also able to help us put together a little QR code for our surveys. So there's these flyers in various locations in the community. So people knew about our forums, and so they can see and scan the QR code to reach the anonymous survey.
So in terms of the next steps and actions, one of the the major tasks we're engaged in right now is acquiring missing data from the Amherst Police Department, and I want to say a little bit about that. The number of questions and categories we sent to the Amherst Police Department was pretty extensive. And much of that information is available. Sometimes it's not available in the form that we can use it to best analyze and review our current situation in Amherst. And a lot of it has to be done by hand. So we have received some information. We processed some of that information. We've gone back to the Amherst Police Department, and they just recently submitted a second round of responses to us, which we are now taking a look at more closely. And we're just trying to find out where the gaps are in terms of what we know and what we don't know. And certainly what we need to know in order to be able to inform our recommendations going forward. We are we're looking forward to hearing from Amherst nonprofits and organizations. Again, this is where the extensive work comes from. We've certainly heard from some people already and some organizations at during our forums, but we hope hope to extend our reach into the community more more deeply through some other strategies where we'll get a chance to hear from organizations more closely in terms of dialogue and discourse. And we're considering a virtual meeting with the Amherst Police Department. That is yet to be formalized. But I think at some point, there's only so much you can do with the with surveys and data and those kinds of things coming across in terms of emails and letters and those types of things. At some point, we have to have a conversation. So we're hoping at some point to have this this virtual meeting with the Amherst Police Department so we can have an in person conversation. And I guess the last one, then I'll turn it over to Ms. Ms. Owen is reviewing our survey responses. You know, Ms. Owen mentioned that the survey. And we hope to get more survey responses than we already have. Certainly, people in the community have been very responsive to this, and it is available on the website. So we're hoping that we'll we'll continue to get more information. The more information we have from the the broadest range of participants, the the better we stand in terms of making recommendations for our community. Ms. Owen?
So we are right now, we're looking for a consultant to help us with research. As we dive deeper into this work, we realized through people sharing lived experiences and through our own research that community safety overlaps with education in different institutional in different institutions in the community. So we believe a consultant would be able to help us do our work better and more thoroughly. We are going to continue to do outreach in the community and move toward recommendations. And we hope to secure the essential resources needed to organize and process our data, broaden and deepen our community outreach, and eventually create a final report in June of this year.
I guess the next slide. So this is our final slide, and I wanted to refer back to to Ms. Griesmer. After this, I would like to welcome questions. If members of the town council have them, would that be appropriate at that time after this slide?
Absolutely.
And then Ms. Owen and I have a comment we'd like to make in the form of a letter coming from our community's Safety Working Group. We'd like to leave that with you at the end. Okay, so one of the the things around the town council that we're looking for is to help spread the word about our community survey. That seems to be a very quick and easy way for people who have access certainly to it to to be able to share their thoughts with our Community Safety Working Group. That's an important piece of our our research. And we we need that from our community. So we were hoping that the town council and other town agencies will 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 also support that work, you know, on our behalf. Attend our public meetings and forums to to listen. And the last thing is the is the comment I wanted to to make at the end, but I thought at this point I would stop and see if the the town council has any comments or questions about our work that Ms. Owen and I can can field at this point and perhaps answer. And if not, as I said, we'll we'll dig back in and and get those answers to you as soon as possible. And I want to again thank you for putting this together. I want to thank you all for the technical support and putting this up. Ms. Owen is being a little modest here. She 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 actually did the the flyers. She made the flyers. She you know, she made this presentation. She put this presentation together. So I'm glad she did it and not me. So that's why it came out so good. So we want to thank her for So we want to thank her for, for all that extra effort. And I also want to thank again. For our members too, in this group who are putting in numerous hours behind the scene. Reading and writing and thinking about this work. So it's not just meeting to meeting. But there's a threat of commitment going through this group that I, I think is going to work well for us going forward. So thank you both. Thank you all again. And thank you for having Ms. Owen and I speak. We're happy to take on any questions you might have at this point.
First of all, we've looked forward to hearing from you. And while some members have been able to attend your meetings and listen to them. And many of us were able to attend the two public forums and enjoyed the. And really, I don't want to say enjoyed, but really were very, very interested to hear the comments that. You were able to receive from residents and former residents of Amherst. Also want to thank the working group. Having been on working groups like this, when you're meeting once a week. The turnaround time is extremely short. And to pack all of this work into. The kind of timeframe that we had to give you and that we did give you is commendable. We want to also make sure that you are welcome to come back anytime you would like. And provide us with any announcements that you would like to make and make sure are made. During our council meetings, we would do them at the beginning of the announcements, just the way they, we did now. And if there's special announcements beyond just meetings, we also tend to make those in. You know, by announcing them as well as in print. So with that, I'm going to ask counselors if they have questions and. That I see is Kathy Shane.
I, I want to echo Lynn's thanks. I thought both the presentation was superb. And I went and looked at your survey and whoever designed that survey, I think it's excellent. It really leaves. A lot of space to probe personal and family, but other experiences. So I have one comment and then a couple of questions. One is, I think the larger. Title was racial and social justice. And I think a lot of the interactions. Have a lot, have as much to do or a lot to do with class as well as race. That if, if you're lower income and you're not used to confronting authority, you're afraid. So make sure you capture some of that, you know, I just. Experiences. So encourage people to be reporting on that as well, that just you felt you. You didn't know how to respond. So my, my questions were where and how we can help. Get more responses back to you. So I didn't know whether you've gone to the schools. And thought of a way of having the schools announce that there is this survey. And get the experience of elementary, middle, middle and high school students and or their families to report up. Can they feature it on the school website? Can they do it in a flyer? We've got district councils, district meetings, and we can certainly. Do that in a meeting and put your, how to find the survey up. And then up in where my district is, it's up in the north of Amherst and we have pockets of very low income. And multiple racial cultural. And I'm just thinking of how we could go to some of those. I mean, if there are flyers that can be distributed to let people know that this is available. Because they might not otherwise. So, so any ideas you have? When you said, how can we be helpful? I think we would like to be helpful to get input. And my last question was about the type of consultant you're looking for. So for, for what kinds of things? I have a, from other walks of life, a larger circle, but I don't know whether that circle would be useful or not. So it's both schools, you know, how can we be helpful at the district level with flyers? And then the type of consultant you're looking for.
Okay, maybe I can, I can start in working, working backwards. Very quickly and maybe Ms. Owen, you could speak to the, the further outreach. Pieces of that. Let me, let me first say that, you know. Mr. Brockman, who has been with us in, in, in this work. Has been, you know, very supportive as, you know, in terms of what. We might need in terms of resources. And I say that broadly in terms of resources. Sometimes that's. A matter of, of people. Sometimes it's a matter of materials and a matter of time. So I think we're, we're right at the cusp of making a more formal recommendation. To, to Mr. Brockman. We, we've already put some things on his desk. He's responded to us already. So we're engaged in that process. And I think at this point, we, we have to make some decisions on how specific we want to be. Around the resources we need so we can get exactly what we need to do the work we need to do. So I'm confident that that will happen. Let me just say off the top quickly. I know we're going to need some help with collecting and analyzing data. I, I think that's going to be a huge thing because there's so much information out there. I think we're probably going to need some information, I mean, some support and. And help around putting reports together and getting them in the form that's usable for readers. As well as informative to the community. So those two things just off the top of my head are, you know, these are things we. You know, have to discuss further with the, with our group certainly. But we're right in the thick of that because at this point. We're, we're starting to move with some more deliberate speed than we were in the first few weeks of our work. So having those resources in place is important. And I, and I feel we can, we can get to that point pretty quickly. Ms. Owen, I don't know in terms of the other questions about the approach, the outreach and schools and et cetera.
Up with outreach and schools, I think would be really helpful if any of you would be able to help aid in that. In regards to the flyer for the survey, what I'm thinking of bringing to the next meeting we have with the Community Safety Working Group. Is making another flyer with just the survey link in the QR code because the forums have already passed. So I don't want people to see that, see the dates and not read all the way down to the survey. So once I, once I put something else together, I think that would be great if we could. Spread that out around town wherever that could be. And extra hands are always needed and thankful.
And I think that just one other piece about the class piece, I, I think that's a, that's important to, to note. Because the, these, they're connected. Quite tightly. And, you know, race and class. Do intermingle in terms of whether people are getting treated fairly. If social justice is being implemented in the proper ways across the board. And. I think we put racial. Out there and, and social justice because that's the. That's kind of the overall thing. You know, if, if there's no racial and social, if there's no social justice, for example. There, there's no economic justice as well. So I think we're, you know, we're, we're, we, we understand that and, but you're highlighting that. Ms. Owen is, is extremely important to hear.
Criticism. I just meant so that other people feel invited in where they've had the kind of experience and it's because. Yeah, they were vulnerable for other kinds of reasons that were related to income and social status.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Andy Steinberg, give your hand up.
Yes, thank you. Actually, I'm building a little bit on what Kathy said, but with a slightly different. Perspective, one that I had shared with the council in previous meeting. And that is that my background before I got involved with town government was. That I was the director of Western Massachusetts Legal Services, which is now Community Legal Aid. And in that capacity, what we were providing was civil legal assistance to people who were in poverty. And that was a group that was sort of implicit a little bit in what Kathy was talking about. But not totally because I really am focusing on people in poverty. And I come at it from two different ways. One is from my experience. In those years that I was working in legal aid, which is, you know, thirty years. That people who are in poverty are frequently the victims of crime. And also frequently the people who are affected if there is some type of. Police misconduct in the community so that they really are affected in both ways. But that there's also the problem that poverty in and of itself is a barrier to participation. And I did talk with the current managing attorney of the office that covers Hampshire County. And asked her how we at Legal Aid are now serving people in this COVID era. Where there were no in-person court appearances or administrative hearing appearances going on. And she acknowledged that it is a large problem because of. The need for technology and the access to technology. So I, my, that gets to my question is what kinds of efforts? Have you made or have you thought about that would make sure that we are reaching that? Population that has technological barriers to being able to participate. In either Zoom type of meetings. Or even getting access to technology to respond to surveys. That are based on computer usage.
Thank you for those, those comments. And I, I think I, I kind of have to go back to. Some other experiences I've had in, in this town, being in the school system for some time. And knowing how difficult it is to. Access certain resources and certain information. Because of the limitations of, of time and personal resources that many, many families do have. I think what you're talking about might come further down the line in terms of recommendations. Because if we're talking about increasing. Level of participation across the community, we're going to have to find ways. To in, increase and open access ways for all people. To be participants in, in this, you know, civic venture, if you will. And I, and I, you know, so we, we, this is something we will certainly talk about. We, we're not looking at this in a pocketed fashion certainly. And I think your, your comments, Mr. Steinberg and Ms. Owen. Are showing and demonstrating again how systemic this is. And how, you know, structurally, it could be. You know, work against people if we don't do it right. So I, I'm, I'm. Taking into account what you said and what Ms. Owen said certainly to say. These things will most likely be embedded in what we recommend. For example, I mean, just the fact that we have a Zoom meeting. Pretty simple for me. Maybe simple for other people, maybe not for some others. And those others may have some very important, important things to say. Important things to contribute. But their voices aren't heard for reasons not that, you know, are not their fault. So how do we raise those voices? How do we open them up? And how do we, you know, give people access? Again, that's a social justice issue. So, you know, I appreciate what, what you said. I think that, that could be coming down the line and it makes perfect sense. Ms. Owen, I, I don't.
I don't real, I don't have much to add. I'm glad that you brought it up though. I do think technological setbacks do exist. I guess as, I don't know, I work with young people who are eighteen through twenty-six. And I also work with young kids who are in the foster care system. And the strength of this area in Western Mass is the school system. So one thing I've noticed more recently is more young people are working with organizations who can aid them and things like Chromebooks. Cell phones, things like that to keep them connected. But I do really appreciate your comment. And I hope that we can find a way to hear the lived experiences of those that might not have a phone or a laptop to hop on Zoom or fill out a survey.
Shalini.
Hi. I also just wanted to thank you again, each one of you. I attended a couple of your meetings and. There's so much work that's going on there. So really, thank you. The thing that I wanted to bring up was what I heard in one of the forums about the UMass Police. And I don't know if that's something that is within the domain of your work or is that something you need, well, or need to look at? And the other thing that I definitely support. That you are hiring a researcher. And if you've heard me before, you probably know that. I would recommend human-centered design research because especially given that we are in a COVID time. And it's so hard to reach out to people and communities and seeing the work. Of some of the human-centered design around policing. They've come up with really creative ways of. Engaging different communities and a lot of that work is used for social problems. So I know that there are few human-centered design researchers at UMass and Hampshire College. So that would be, I think, cool. And also the other thing I was thinking was in terms of. Within the BIPOC communities, whether. There's a way to reach out to different groups within that, for example, just BIPOC-owned businesses. And what might be their specific experiences or students, what are their experiences? And then residents in different districts or, so just kind of finding a way to reach out to all of them. And again, did anyone see how we are helping with the school? I think that's a great idea to use the schools, maybe mobile food markets. Or other such venues where we can have ways to interact with different people. Legal Women Borders came up too. That's all. And please, please do let us know how we can continue to support your work.
This, in, this interchange right now is very supportive. I mean, if we can continue this kind of. Interaction, it's extremely helpful and informative to us. I do want to say that the, the working group that we have have quite a varied background. And they individually and we collectively. Bring a number of different resources to bear. So some of the things that are being suggested, suggested here. Fall into the bailiwick of some of the, the experiences and a knowledge base that we have right on our. On our very group, which I'm fortunate to be a part of. So, you know, taking this in and I'm, you know, some of them are, are. I haven't looked at the attendee list certainly, but some of them are, if not all of them. Are, are on this, this meeting right now. So they're listening and I'm sure they're taking in information as we, as Ms. Owen and I are.
Are there any other comments or questions at this time? Turn back to Mr. Wiley and Ms. Owen.
So thank you again for, for this, you know, opportunity and the invitation to have. Additional opportunities going forward. And we hope you will continue to support us as you have been doing and certainly tonight. I want to preface this statement I'm reading. On behalf of the Community Safety Working Group to say very plainly that this is extremely difficult work. It requires. Much from us, all of us on, on a number of levels. So this, this comment. And letter that we're submitting comes with the deepest respect for our work. And also the, the, the deepest respect for our community. And what we need to support going forward in order to. Make some of the things that we want to have happen, happen in a way that's going to have meaning for not only our BIPOC community, but for. All members of our community. So I'm going to read a statement that in the form of a letter to the council. And then I think we'll, we'll be done, Ms. Reesmer.
Mr. Wiley, do you want me to read the second page and you read the first page since it's a little bit lengthier?
Sure, that would be great. Thank you. Or you can read the first page if you want.
Okay.
Why don't you go ahead and I'll finish.
Okay. Dear Town Council, we are writing to you with a sense of deep obligation to hold leaders in our community accountable for their words and actions. Our group and community were harmed by the actions of town member, of town council member Elisa Brewer during the Community Forum on Public Safety that was held January sixteenth, twenty twenty-one via Zoom. The space we created was clearly defined as one for residents to share their stories and experiences and to communicate their knowledge and expertise with our group, a designated town body made up of BIPOC community members. During the meeting, we aimed to practice progressive stacking by asking BIPOC community members to share their comments first. This is a practice used to increase equity in meeting spaces. It was also specifically said in our opening statement that while we would not be responding to comments from the community, we intended to listen deeply and respectfully so that the community feedback could help inform our work moving forward. The purpose of this forum was to create a safe space for BIPOC residents to do so. The Community Safety Working Group is one of two official bodies made up of BIPOC community members. At the start of our BIPOC-centered forum, Ms. Brewer publicly reprimanded our group's tardiness and compliance with the open meeting laws. Although this comment may have been intended to be supportive, it is important to recognize the difference between intention and the real-life impact these actions have within our society and within our own community. The impact of these actions brought up feelings of anger within our group, distracted us from our important work, and created mistrust between this group and our fellow town leaders. We have spent a great deal of collective time thinking and healing as a result of these outrageous comments that could have been spent on our work or time with our families. This is what racism looks like. This is unacceptable and we deserve respect. We're creating a safe space for, we are creating a safe space for folks traditionally marginalized by town governance systems. As an elective, as an elected official, it is your responsibility to represent our community. And it is your responsibility to be aware of the power dynamics that exist in this position. Instead, Ms. Brewer disregarded, disrespected, and harmed members of our community by speaking directly in response to a community member defending herself while discrediting their voice and lived experiences. The impact of this is detrimental to the Community Safety Working Group's work and causes the BIPOC community members to fear being reprimanded and retaliation in their own town if they step forward to share their truth in the future. These are the very, these are the very actions that perpetuate and, and enable systemic racism to continue within our governing and political bodies, and it must stop. The implication and the impact on our communities are massive and deserve acknowledgement and repair.
The, the town has asked the Community Safety Working Group to hold spaces to hear from and inform decisions within our community. With this comes immense bravery and responsibility. We take seriously this responsibility and know that it is our job and yours to represent our community. We cannot do this if town officials publicly denounce community members and their lived experiences. We must represent and not disregard our community. These racist actions are why this group is so important. Because there is very little representation in the town's governing bodies. These actions mirror what happens in our town at large. Disregard for the authority of BIPOC leaders and continuous microaggressions. Or macroaggressions towards BIPOC community members who raise injustices, causing immense harm. The Community Safety Working Group respectfully requests that the Town Council do not give public comment or respond to public comments given at BIPOC-centered forums. We also urge the Town Council to invest in anti-racist education and work and to publicly acknowledge their own privilege and power dynamics when representing our community. We enjoyed a strong turnout for our community forums and gained important insight into the experiences of individuals in the community with the Amherst Police Department. We want to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to speak before the working group. And I believe we fulfill that responsibility in both of our community forums. We plan to address our BIPOC community in a separate letter to convey that we feel guilt in allowing the spaces we promised would be safe to be invaded by a white person in a position of power. To know that we are committed to the Community Safety Working Group's work and that we will center BIPOC community members in a more thoughtful way moving forward. The Community Safety Working Group would welcome an apology from Ms. Brewer acknowledging the egregious nature of the comments and its impact on our work and a commitment to refrain from repeating that behavior in the future. In addition, we would welcome a commitment from the Town Council to monitor and continually educate its members on how difficult it often is for community members to speak in public and raise their level of awareness to this fact. And we end by saying, if you have any further questions, please email the group directly at our email address, cswg@amherstmass.gov. And Ms. Owen and I want to thank you for listening to us and hearing what we had to say this evening. And thank you for your contributions.
Let me just conclude this part of our meeting by stating the following. Because through Mr. Bauchaman, I was able to connect with Mr. Wiley this weekend. And also able to view various tapes which have now been shared with everybody in the council. I've spent a number of, spent some time talking with a councilman, councillor, Elisa Brewer. And she has, as of six o'clock this evening, posted various documents, including an apology in our packet. And those were sent directly to Mr. Wiley so that he can make them available to his committee. Furthermore, as I have stated to both the Town Council and to Mr. Wiley and Ms. Owen, the Town Council will also respond to your letter. However, the response will require that a draft be presented, a full Town Council meeting. And that there be a vote for the president to send the letter with any amendments asked by the council. We all want that letter to be responsive and we, and not be done in haste. Therefore, as a Town Council, we will have a draft response for review at our meeting on February eighth. I have already informed the Chair and Vice Chair, as I mentioned before, of the Community Safety Working Group of this process. I would like to suggest that we not move on with further comment and we move on to the next portion of our agenda, if that is acceptable to everybody else. And again, we want to thank both Brianna and Mr. Paul Wiley for being with us this evening. This has been a most informative conversation. And we stand ready to help you in every way possible, including we have five district meetings coming up during February. And we'll make sure that all of the information that we can have out there for people in our district letters as well will be there. Thank you.
Thank you for the invitation and, and the, the time you devoted to this. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. Come back anytime. So we are going to actually take a brief five-minute break and come back. We would like to move on to the Belcher Town Road property acquisition for affordable housing with various reports and council discussion and a vote. Please mute your mics. And when you come back, put your picture back up so that I know you're there. Thank you. Pretty much all back. I'm going to quickly make sure the councils are reconnected. I'm going to start with Pat DeAngelis.
Present.
Uh, Darcy Dumont.
Here.
And Lynn Griesmer is here. Mandy Johannicky.
Present.
Dorothy Pam.
Present.
Evan Ross.
Present.
George Ryan.
Out of breath, but present.
Kathy Shane.
Here.
Steve Schreiber.
Present.
Andy Steinberg.
Present.
Yeah, Sarah Schwartz.
Present.
Shalini Baumell.
I'm here.
Alyssa Brewer.
Present.
Thank you. Um, so I skipped over the proclamation. We are not skipping over it. But I learned that one of the people involved in the Belcher Town Road property has a time constraint this evening. And so we're going to move forward with the Belcher Town Road property and then come back to the and probably then do Pomeroy Village and then do the proclamation. Is there any objection to that from the council? Okay, seeing none. So we're going to do the Belcher Town Road property. We have a finance committee report. We have a community resources committee report. There's further opportunity for council discussion. And then we have a motion and vote. So Andy or Kathy, whichever of you is giving the finance report.
Yes, as most of the council knows, I was otherwise preoccupied after our meeting on just January fifth. And Kathy Shane is Vice Chair took over and drafted the report and is going to present it tonight.
Thank you, Andy. Um, since you all got the report a few days ago, and I hope, hope I've had time to read it. I'm just going to highlight some of what we put in the report. Um, the first and probably most important is that we unanimously recommend going forward with the order to purchase the property. And the order has three main parts. One is it authorizes the town manager to purchase the three properties. It appro, secondly, it appropriates six hundred thousands from CPA funds and authorizes borrowing of this amount and principal and debt service to be repaid by CPA. And third, it authorizes the town manager to enter into a long-term lease or some fee arrangement with the development company for purposes of developing a community housing. So it's, it's a purchase order, but it also sets us on the road of developing these affordable this very exciting opportunity to purchase these three properties. The Finance Committee found that the proposed project is sound, financially feasible, and raises no legal concerns and is consistent with the Community Preservation Act. Moreover, as we've stated in the past, they, it's well within the purview of the CPAC Committee, but also the way Community Preservation Act works to enter into debt arrangements and repayment of loan from CPA money. There was a, a report that we got that showed in out ears that this CPA will still have resources beyond the debt that they're incurring here. So it's, it is a financially sound proposal. There were just a few things that came up during the review that I thought were worth highlighting for everyone. The CPA, the definition of affordable goes up to a hundred percent of area median. And this reaches well into workforce incomes. For example, and this is in the report, for a family of four, that's up to a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. Or for a single person, it's eighty-three thousand. The state definition of affordable for subsidy is at eighty percent in range. And that is also at the lower end of moderate income. So the RFP that can follow with this within CPA guidelines can have quite a range of incomes within the new development that will all be considered as affordable. It's not just poverty, but it's solidly into the workforce. John Horneck made this point during his presentation. Secondly, it can be packaged with the East Street School if there's a decision to do that. And that reaches a scale with the new development plus East Street School that makes it very attractive for a developer because it spreads the overhead cost of applying for state funds over a larger number of units. It's both financially more feasible and you reach economies of scale. The other point that in initial presentation, we were told about houses that are on two of the properties. And initially, it was thought that we'd be able to gain rental income from these houses. After legal counsel review, the decision and advice was only one of the houses that's currently under a lease would be rented up until the end of the current lease, but we wouldn't continue to rent it because we can't manage it using CPA funds. Those funds would recoup. So we will not be getting rental income from those houses, although a developer could eventually. And then the last is we raised one out, out looking forward financial risk that was acknowledged, not for the project, but that the infrastructure, the streets, the sidewalks around the development are in very poor repair. They present a safety concern and there will need, need to be investment. It's a state road, so we're hoping that we would gain state money similar to Pomeroy Lane. But right now, that's an unfunded need of this project. If we really want to densify and have more families walking in this area or biking, they can't do so safely right now. So those were the three points I just wanted to highlight that are in the report. And again, this, there was unanimous support of this, including our two resident non-voting members who both highly recommended the, the purchase.
Is there any question about the Finance Committee reports from the council? Seeing none, we're going to go Mandy Johannicky, please. CRC.
Thank you. Um, I will make it brief. Kathy covered a whole lot of what CRC also talks about. Uh, CRC voted unanimously to recommend the Town Council vote to acquire the property. We, as the report says, it was very brief because the finance report is always very extensive. And we in CRC are aware that we need a lot of affordable housing and we need more affordable housing in this project. And the acquisition of the property will do that, or will lead us to being able to do that. And the location that is proposed for this is appropriate for housing of the size of proposed. It's proxim, because of its proximity to the Village Center and an elementary school that has recreation available, playgrounds and all. And recreation, you know, sports fields, conservation and farming land that is being developed for community gardens and trail use. And a location on a busy street that is served by public transportation. I'm happy to answer any other questions. But I think Kathy covered the rest of it.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Missy, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I, I really appreciated the way that both of you delved into like, what will this really look like for affordability? And so I understand that some of that is to be determined. And so I appreciate that you tried to tease that out a little bit, that there's different possible options associated with that. And then the only thing I wanted to say about the Finance Committee report is it would be awesome to go ahead and include under the Finance Committee list of names, the names of the people who are serving as non-voting members. Because, you know, they should get credit for that.
Thank you.
Will do.
We agree and we will do. Uh, any other comments from councilors or questions at this time? Okay, then I'm going to read the motion and look for a second. In accordance with Charter Section 5.6, having been published on the Town Bulletin Board for a minimum of ten days on December twenty-second, twenty twenty. A public forum held on January fourth, twenty twenty-one. And having been reviewed and recommended by the Finance Committee Report of January twenty-first, first, twenty twenty-one, as well as recommended by the Community Resources Committee Report of January twenty-first, twenty twenty-one to adopt Council Order FY twenty-one dash zero eight A. An order appropriating, authorizing debt and acquiring and disposing of three parcels for community housing purposes as presented. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. Thank you, Dorothy. Any other further questions at this time? Let me point out that the complete financial order is attached to your motion sheet for the evening. And it is a page and three-fourths, so I'm not going to read it. Any further questions at this point? Hearing none, I'm going to move for the vote. And in this case, I'm going to start with Darcy Dumont.
All right, yes.
Griesmer is aye. Johannicky.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Ryan.
Yes.
Shane.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Steinberg. Schwartz.
Aye.
Shalini Baumell.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
Aye.
Matt DeAngelis.
Aye.
Unanimous, thirteen in favor, none opposed, none abstaining, and no people absent. Thank you for all the hard work that has gone into moving us through this process. And we look forward to updates. We're going to move on to the Pomeroy Village Mass Works Grant. And this is the action we're going to take tonight is to refer this to the Town Services and Outreach Committee, so we don't have to make decisions tonight. But this is the more thorough thorough presentation and will allow us as a council to identify things we want to make sure that TSL pays attention to. I will also mention that if there are further issues that, you know, relate to the larger community, there may need to be a later referral to CRC, and if there's any further financial issues, they would need to be referred to Finance Committee. So with that, I'm going to call on I think it's Paul, Chris Brestrop, and Guilford Mourning, David.
So we have slides to show, and while Sean's putting those up, we just have a presentation to you. It's our introduction to this project that we're hoping to be able to do in a very near future. Really proud of our team for securing a $1.5 million grant from the state to totally rehabilitate this this key intersection that Mr. Hayden referenced earlier today. The grant acquisition was a was a teamwork between the Planning Department and the Public Works Department. Public Works doing the engineering, planning, doing the planning part of it. And it'll be, is a project that's been on our list for a long time, as Mr. Hayden said, and it'll be one that we'll be able to take off our list using state funds for the big bulk of it. Your main decision for the council is what kind of intersection do you want? Do you want a roundabout, or do you want a signalized intersection? And we want you to think about both of those. We want, we'll give you information on both options. And we want you to keep an open mind for both options, because they're, each one has advantages and disadvantages. So we want to go through a pretty thorough process, engage the public in a pretty thorough way as well. With your decision, we'll be able to move forward with our design, and we'll go through all that later this today. So the presentation, we're going to talk about the intersection, the challenges we face, some of the history for the for the intersection, the finances, and what we're suggesting for public engagement. So we can go to the next slide. And I'm going to talk a little bit about this, but then turn it over to Dave Zoback very quickly. Pomeroy Village, everyone knows, is the intersection of West Street and Pomeroy Lane and West Pomeroy Lane. It's what we have defined as a village center that has restaurants, retail stores, a service station, their offices, two preschool centers. There's an affordable housing cooperative, a planned subdivision that's not far away. There's apartments, condominiums, office parks. It's and within very, within two and a half miles, there are, I lost the screen, but Sean, but within two and a half miles are the the cultural district around Hampshire College, plus the college itself. And also, it's with the acquisition of Hickory Ridge, we will have we hope to create some walking paths to access this area from the apartment complexes on East Hadley Road. And so that's a very exciting opportunity, and this is all just coming together so wonderfully. It's just a real opportunity. So I'm going to turn it over to Dave to keep us going.
Sure. Thank you, Paul, and thank you to the council for having us tonight. We're going to run through this slide deck fairly quickly because there's quite a few slides. We were we were glad to be able to get this to you last week, and we hope you had an opportunity to to skim through it and see and share our excitement about this incredible opportunity we have. And really, as Paul said, it's an opportunity with this Mass Works Grant to really re-envision what this intersection can be. And of course, one of the reasons that we were able to get the grant is there are some deficiencies in the intersection, and we're going to be honest about those as well. And we'll talk about those. I was on the call, the Zoom earlier, and I did hear the Chair of the TAC talk about some of the goals of the TAC and staff, and I'm sure the council will share those goals about making this a walkable, bikeable, livable, a more livable, more bikeable, more walkable intersection and village center. So next slide. So there are many challenges here. I'm sure any of you and many of you who either live in South Amherst or recreate there, or eat or dine, or or spend time down down this way toward Hampshire College and and other parts south, understand that this this intersection was designed a long time ago, and there are a number of inefficiencies and and safety issues from poor pedestrian access and amenities. It is, as Aaron Hayden said, a very car-centered design. But there is an opportunity there. There are a number of parcels that are available for development, but also a number of underdeveloped parcels that that really could be redeveloped into something that contributes more to the village center. Next slide. We want to make sure whenever we're doing planning work that we are following the master plan. And I know the council has spent a considerable amount of time in your first term talking about the master plan. And of course, in the Planning Department and Conservation Department and all departments, we first looked at that plan to say what was called for and what were some of the goals and objectives outlined in the master plan. And clearly, the Pomeroy Village Center was one of those those areas of focus, and that's one of the reasons why we applied for the grant. So it's identified as a priority area for development, and it can add to our tax base, increase housing, there's potential for affordable housing, and a lot of other amenities. Next slide. So as Paul said, we were successful in getting a $1.5 million grant, a highly competitive state process. 1.5 million, we all, that's a that's a wonderful number. I remember when we got the grant for the Triangle Street intersection, we thought, you know, we were we were very thankful for that state support. But 1.5 million doesn't go as far as it used to, so we need to be careful. We clearly want to aim high, and we want to, we have aspirations for how how we, how nice, how aesthetically pleasing, how safe this intersection can be, but working with Mr. Mouring, who, you know, that is his specialty with his engineering staff. We need to keep it within budget as well. We don't have unlimited funds down to redo this intersection. So the focus will be on traffic, bicycle and pedestrian safety. And we look for collaboration between departments, but also a collaboration with the neighborhood, with property owners, with business owners, and people who live in the village center and in the neighborhoods surrounding the village center. Next slide. As Paul mentioned, we think this this investment from the state leverages significant opportunities. We're continuing to work on the acquisition of the Hickory Ridge Golf Course. And as Paul mentioned, a number of opportunities could present themselves there with connections to other housing developments and neighborhoods. And the opportunity to spur private reinvestment in this village center. And we need to keep that front and center. There is undeveloped land in the village center, and we hope that some of the owners of that land will be as excited as we are about what's coming in the next couple of years. Next slide. Turn it over to Chris Brestrop.
I am Chris Brestrop, Planning Director. I'm going to cough. I can't believe it. This is a map from about 1830 showing the intersection of Pomeroy Lane and West Street. We also know it as 116. Before Pomeroy Lane, only the east-west roadway in South Amherst was Bay Road, the only east-west roadway was Bay Road, which you can see at the bottom of the slide here. This picture shows a building that was there around that time. This building was built in 1825. It's called the Aaron Merrick House, and it's the one of the earliest brick buildings built in Amherst. In the 1950s and 60s, the intersection was essentially a crossroads. The gas station, small convenience store were built there, and over the years, the village center grew up. Next slide, please. The project is located along a critical north-south transportation route, Route 116, that links important sites in Amherst with South Hadley, Granby, and Point South. We also have Pomeroy Lane, which is our east-west link, and it links South Amherst Common where the Munson Library is with Hadley and Points West. Next slide, please. The area around the intersection is a mixed-use area and can contain subdivisions of single-family homes, as well as apartment complexes along East Hadley Road and the apartment complex of Pomeroy Court. The area also includes office buildings like Amherst Office Park owned by Ron LaVerdiere and the two buildings owned by the Slowbuddy Development Corporation. It's a high-traffic intersection, especially during commuter hours. Next slide, please. The site is located close to the Hickory Ridge Golf Course, which is soon to be purchased by the town. You can see that as a big white area to the left. It is also located near a high concentration of apartment complexes on East Hadley Road. And this area is considered to be an environmental justice area, meaning that there's a large population of people of various ethnic backgrounds, many with low incomes, who need to be included in the public process. Next slide, please. I'm going to show you an aerial view showing some of the more prominent land uses. Office buildings at the South Town Commons, Amherst Office Park, the Speedway Gas Station and Convenience Store, Jehovah's Witnesses Kingdom Hall, the Montessori School, and Mission Cantina, and other businesses. And then the next slide, please. The next slide shows areas of housing in the area. Yes, and gives you a sense of how many apartment units there are in any given building. Next slide, please. In the 1990s, the state developed a plan for West Street and Route 116, including the Pomeroy Lane intersection. But the town thought that the plan was overblown and overdeveloped, and the town decided to take over the road so that it would have more control over what happened there. So the town now owns the whole of this road going all the way, starting at Amherst College at the top of the hill, all the way down to Country Corners Road in South Amherst, just south of Atkins Market, and which is just north of the notch. So the town has control over this road. It's not a state highway anymore. In 2004, traffic signals were installed by the town as an alternative to this design that the state developed. And then in 2008, 2009, a little short while after I started working in Town Hall, the Planning Department and the DPW put together a design, a design plan for the intersection. And as part of the process, there was a lot of public process, including public meetings and surveys. Then in 2013, the town applied for a Mass Works Grant for this design, but we were unsuccessful at that time. But this year, we were successful, and we're so happy about that. In 2020, we received $1.5 million to improve the intersection. Next slide, please. I think the next slide has a list of deficiencies. We've already talked about some of these things, but it's really lack of pedestrian accessibility, lack of sidewalks, no bike lanes, there's a lot of queuing going south in the afternoon. Next slide, please. The next slides are visions or views of what this intersection looks like right now. Here we are looking north toward the Speedway Gas Station. And the next slide, please, is looking east. You can see the office building on the right, and just beyond that is the Kingdom Hall and the Montessori School. Now, next slide, please. Now we're looking south towards towards the notch. Next slide, please. And now we are looking west. So if you kept going through the intersection, you would be heading towards Hadley. Next slide, please. During the early stages of work on this project, the town council will need to decide if the town wants an enhanced, signalized intersection or a roundabout. And we'll be talking to you about that more in the future. And now I'd like to turn it over to Guilford Mouring, Superintendent of Public Works. Is Guilford there?
We don't hear you, Guilford. He's not muted.
He's going to come back in.
Okay. He had a little connection problem, so he's re-entering.
So I think, as you can tell, we're really excited about this project. And it's a good thing because we're not using town funds other than matching our our staff's work with it, so. But there's some, this decision for you is going to be a big one for you, I think.
May I just say that it's clear that this project didn't come out of nowhere, that it's been around since the 1990s, so we're finally getting around to doing it, and I'm really glad about that.
While we're waiting for Guilford, could somebody describe what an enhanced signalized intersection is?
It simply means better signals than there are there now, so there'll be probably smart lights and things like that.
Is Guilford back in yet?
Yes, he's here.
He's here, we just can't hear him.
Talk about it? Can't.
No, we're not hearing you, Guilford. So maybe we should just move on.
So the, can you show us the next slide, please? Here's the enhanced intersection that we designed back in 2008, 2009, and it's had improvements to it since. So it's showing you a crossed intersection, essentially what exists there now with added turning lanes, northbound and southbound, also added bike lanes, and new signals, as as Mr. Buckelman said, and crosswalks and curb ramps in all directions. Next slide, please. The next slide shows you the roundabout design. And what that would be is there wouldn't be any signals. You would have a roundabout probably similar to the one at Triangle Street and East Pleasant Street, roughly that size. And you would have all the amenities of added bike lanes, pedestrian access, and crosswalks and curb ramps, and significant traffic calming. Next slide, please. So some of the things that the town council will need to consider when it's deciding which design to approve would be its impact on commercial businesses, bicycle and pedestrian access and safety, accommodations for buses, ADA considerations, meaning considerations for handicapped accessibility, place-making benefits. How do you create a village center here? That's the village center has been developing slowly, but we don't want to do anything that would kind of put it off track. And then cost comparisons, which which design can be done for the amount of money that we have? The traffic volume, and we're going to be working with an engineer to to figure that out. And then safety features. Next slide, please. In terms of finances, the estimated total project cost is about 1.658 million. We have a Mass Works Grant for 1.5 million, and the town match is going to be staff time, engineering, planning, and oversight, et cetera. Next slide, please. We wanted to talk to you about the public engagement process. So both the town staff and town council will be engaged in the public engagement process. Town staff will be working on meeting with abutting property owners, meeting, and we already started that to some degree, meeting with commercial and business operators, focusing on neighborhood meetings, Orchard Valley, Carriage Lane, East Hadley Road, et cetera. Enhanced interactive website project webpage. So that means that we will be displaying information about this project as it moves along and giving people an opportunity to comment on it. And the town council will be holding council committee meetings. I understand that there are two open public meetings required for this project, and you will also be soliciting written public comment. Next slide, please. This gives you an outline of what the timeline is for the This gives you an outline of what the timeline is for the public engagement process. We've already begun, we're having this staff presentation tonight. So in January and February, the Town Council will be discussing, discussing what the public engagement process for this project should be, and then referring this project to the appropriate council committee. In March and April, there'll be outreach to individual neighbors and business operators and landowners, and then the two council committee-sponsored public meetings. In April, May, and June, council committee review and recommendation will occur with a report to Town Council. And Town Council will be making a choice about which design for the intersection it wishes to go with, and that would happen probably sometime in May or June. It really needs to happen by June. Next slide, please. So the overall project timeline, again, we're starting in June of 2021. That's when we receive the money from the state. We'll begin design and surveying and engineering at that time, and that will go on until approximately December of 2021. Then in January of 2022, we'd be advertising bids and opening bids in February. The contract would be awarded in February if everything goes well, and construction would start in March of 2022. So that's March of next year. And then construction, we hope, will be complete in May of 2023. And that bottom item punch list, what that means is that the project is essentially complete. There may just be a few things that need to be finished, like raising catch basin lids and things like that. So with that, I think we are finished with our program, and we welcome your questions. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Sean, would you please take the down and also put the clock up for comments? Okay? I'm going to call on, since the clock comes up, I'm calling on Kathy Shane, but hold on. The result, Kathy?
Okay, I'm on the timer. Okay, I have, I have a list of comments slash questions, and I don't think I need to get answers to them right now. It's just for things that we need to be thinking about. One, the speed limit on the north-south road, that's a state road. Can we, will we try to get it lowered well before the intersection? So drop it down to 25 miles an hour, quite a distance away, as part of traffic slowing. Second, bus stops, where are they now? Where would they be? That was already mentioned in one of it. The sidewalks, the third, is how far will the
Raise my hand.
How far will the sidewalk extend along Pomeroy? Can, do we have enough money to extend it up to Hickory Ridge? So if we get a development up there, will you be able to walk along a sidewalk there where there isn't one now? I'm assuming, because one of the diagrams showed it, that if you had signalized, there's enough money to repair the road and widen it to allow turning lanes. Smart lights have already been mentioned, but they are pretty useful for slowing traffic and allowing turning safely. And then one of, I've been doing work on, because roundabouts were discussed up in North Amherst, on trying to gather information on them. And one of the advice on them is if you're talking about higher density, is that's your goal, and you've got little kids, inexperienced bikers, crossing intersections, and ADA kinds of concerns, you're better with signalized intersection for pedestrian safety. It may improve car safety, but one pointed out that one accident with a bike or pedestrian is, it tends to be pretty serious. So, so I, so that's just a thinking of where we're going with this. Whatever the traffic volume is now, if we densify this, the traffic volume will be higher than it is now. I mean, that's part of the design of what we're doing in here. And it's been pointed out, there's preschool and little kids around here. So it's not just the disabled, but inexperienced walkers as pedestrians. I think I am out of my time, so those are my seven points about thinking about where we're going.
Thank you. Dorothy, Pam, please, first of all, reset the clock, Sean. Thank you, Dorothy.
Okay. Well, this sounds very exciting. I have just two questions. To widen the road to allow for wide sidewalks and bike lanes, does the town already own that right-of-way, or will you have to buy it from people, and how does that impact the situation? And then I guess I kind of, it's going to take 14 months to build, which may, in fact, in intersection life, not be a long time. I don't know. But how much business disruption will there be during that time? And are there any plans to keep it, to reduce it somehow? And that's my questions.
Thank you. I'm going to pause for a moment and just ask Chris and David if there's any response to any of the questions. For example, the issue of owning land.
That would be a Guilford question.
Guilford?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I love my computer. One of the things we have to do in the design process is actually do a survey of the properties. If you look at the drawings that show both the signalized intersection and the roundabout, those are based on just the GIS lines we have, and there is some, there is some doubt as to what we do own for right-of-way in that area. So there is going to be, no matter which, no matter which choice we take, will be some land takings that have to take place between now and construction.
I think the other questions are really part of the design as we go along. I don't think they require answers tonight.
Could I answer one of them? Because I think pretty definitive, the budget does not include a sidewalk to Hickory Ridge. That is a very significant additional cost and a permitting challenge, given that there's a perennial stream that goes in wetland area along West Pomeroy Lane. So I just wanted to create realistic expectations that this will not connect by sidewalk to West Pomeroy. We're still looking at village center connections that might happen in other ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat DeAngelis, we'll start the clock for you.
I'm very familiar with this intersection because I lived at the Pomeroy Lane Cooperative for the first five years that I lived in Amherst. And I'm not going to recite the issues about ADA needs or children because they've been brought up eloquently by Myra Ross and also talked about by Kathy. But I do want, when I'm looking at the list of who's going to be reached out to, abutters, owner, business owners, et cetera, et cetera. And as liaison for the Disability Access Advisory Committee, I'm really coming off of a meeting where they were quite upset that they had not been contacted about this. And their, the triangle roundabout really does not work for anyone with any kind of disability or impairment. So I guess my question, and I'm running out of time, gosh. My question is, why isn't the Disability Access Advisory Committee automatically reached out to whenever any of these projects happen? They are a committee of the town. They work very hard. They are people, many of them, not all, are differently abled, and they have a perspective that this town needs on many levels.
I'll take that one.
Please, go ahead.
We don't have all the information they're going to ask questions about. We don't even have all the information you're asking questions about. To take a project and automatically rule something out before you have gathered all the information you can to decide what are the pros and cons of which way you want to go is really a disservice to everyone, including those with disabilities. The goal should always be to look at all the options. And one of the things I was going to talk about is really, there's four options for this intersection right now. Option one is to leave it the way it is, if we actually decide that we can live with the lights it is and just make a few improvements. Option two is to go to the fully, fully-designed intersection, which is what Mass Highway proposed, and no one really wanted at the time, including a lot of the people on the Disabilities Access Committee. Because the time period to walk across the intersection was so large, and it was so great, they didn't really want to have things like that. And that's one of the reasons why the town took the intersection over. Do we need turn lanes now? The design you saw was based on data from 2000, 2001, and 2000, 2000 and 2001. We're now almost 20 years away from there. Is, are there different things we need to look at, and the data needs to be different? Before you go and talk to a committee, you need to have some of the answers of what their questions are going to be, and that's really what we're trying to do here and to gather. So I really, it's not that we leave them out, it's we don't have information to talk to them about.
Sometimes I think, though, Guilford, that you need their questions to stimulate your thinking. And so going to them much sooner than you're saying, I think, would be very helpful.
All right. Shalini Balmum, let's put the clock up.
Okay, here goes. Cost of maintenance, so that could be another consideration as we are deciding the variables. We had a great district meeting. I would encourage you all to use the chat. We sent you the copy of the chat because we made a summary of all the input that we got from the residents there. Pros and cons of the roundabouts that, and I suppose you're going to tell us that at some later point. Just for the council members, I received this from an urban planner, and this was also brought up in a district meeting. One of the urban planners from UMass, I think, spoke in favor of the roundabouts, which was very interesting for me because most of the residents, including me, were like, no, no, we don't want roundabouts because we want it to be people-centered and be more user-friendly and all of that, and build community and all of that. But I got this from somebody, it's called Public Square. It's a publication with best practices. And it actually says that unlike the big, fast, scary, dangerous road traffic circles, when they're designed properly, they can actually be great for place-making. And they said, "Design properly roundabouts enhance place-making pedestrian experience, and they're a gift to landscape architects and whatnot." So I'd be really curious to hear, you know, what is proposed over here? And then in Triangle Street, do we have like the yield signs? Because, or, I mean, what is it about the Triangle Street that does not make it work for people with disabilities? And why are people, you know, and what is the difference going, I mean, do we have all the things in place that could make a roundabout a really good people-centered? Is that possible? And what are we not doing correctly? What are we envisioning here? List of stakeholders, what I'm hearing is that it would be really great to see that on the website, that these are the different people, including the Committee for Disabilities, like the different stakeholders that are being reached out to, and at what point they will be reached out to maybe, or something? So that people know that, and I do appreciate the idea of going to them early on to even understand, to bring that lens to the whole problem, you know, like what to be looking out for. Is my timer? Let's go on, keep talking.
Anything else?
Pomeroy Plan. There was a plan done long ago in 2008 or 2009, and I've been trying to find that. Is it possible to, for all of us to see? Because that, I believe, had a lot of community engagement in it. Oh, and then bus stops. I don't think we have bus stops there, and benches. And do we have money for beautification around it? Okay. Oh, signage, and signage, to make it accessible, and yeah.
Time's up. Darcy?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm excited to see the work to be done at Pomeroy Village and that the grant will pay for almost the entire project. I was involved in putting out some ideas way back when it was, when the master plan was being looked at for Pomeroy Village. My, my greatest hope would be that as a fully-realized village center, it could have an anchor business located there. And my real dream is that the Amherst Food Co-op be located there. So I would agree that we should outreach to relevant town committees just as a matter of course on these projects, including the Disability Access Committee, TAC, and the ECAC. All of them would potentially have thoughts or recommendations. And also, I am interested to know more about the value of roundabouts. I've, you know, I've Googled them and learned quite a bit more about them since our District Five meeting that we had, that Erin mentioned. And I guess the question is how much safety it provides, because that seems to be its main value. I was concerned at the public comment today about the problems that visually impaired people might have with a roundabout. So I want to know about that. And I, I I just want to know whether the additional safety provided is, it makes it worth having more so than what the amenities we could have if we didn't spend all of our money on the roundabout. So just, you know, want us to be looking into all of those details about, and not just assume that we're going to do it. I think it seems weird to a lot of normal people to have a roundabout when you only have an intersection of two streets. That seems odd to me, too. So I think it just needs to be explained more, the merits, the value of a roundabout.
I'm going to pause and ask Christine Brester, who has her hand up, if she'd like to comment.
I wanted to say two things. I think one of the councilors mentioned the fact that they thought that the roadway was still owned by the state. And it's not owned by the state from the center of Amherst all the way down to Country Corners Road, which is almost at the notch. It's owned by the town, so we make the decisions about what's going to happen there, even though we're using state money. And the other thing I wanted to say is the old design. One of the councilors asked to see the old design, and it is a good design, but it's more expensive than what we're currently able to build. I think it's quite a lot more expensive. It went farther in all four directions than the current thought is to go. So I don't think we're going to be able to build the old design, and Guilford probably has it somewhere in his files, but I'm not sure that that's a a good, a road that we want to go down, so to speak.
Okay. No pun intended, right? Steven Schreiber?
Hi. So what was it, 10 years ago, Amherst had no experience with roundabouts? And now I was trying to count. Do we have five, including the new one built at UMass? So it's somewhere around five. And I remember when the first one was built on the north side of the UMass campus, there was some discussion that the world was going to end. And then when the double rotary was built closer to Atkins, the world was surely going to end. But the apocalypse is going to be the triangle rotary, so, which is, and that's the, the triangle rotary, I'm sorry, roundabout, is one that I go through multiple times per day on my bike, on foot. And it has made that intersection exceptionally safer and more effective. So I hope by now the fears of roundup rotaries has dissipated. And the benefits of rotaries, especially if you've lived here during the construction of all of these, the benefits are enormous. So I think that what Myra Ross said earlier, that needs to be looked at. I'm not seeing impaired, but I do, but I go through that intersection with lots of other people, you know, every day. But I think that how one deals with those issues needs to be addressed. I bicycle through those intersections all the time. It's much safer than I was going through a signalized intersection. So all of this is anecdotal, so I'm telling my story. Others are telling their stories. I think we need to have a more empirical, you know, look at the benefits. So anyway, I think that wherever a roundabout can be built, it should be built because it just, it keeps idling traffic. It just seems like a much more efficient way, even with a modern smart signalized system. It just seems like a more efficient way to keep all movement going, pedestrians, bicycles, and cars. The other thing I thought, I say 55 seconds. The other thing I thought about triangle is that it was going The other thing I thought about Triangle is that it was going to kill the prospective development on those underdeveloped lots, right on that. You know, where the Bank of America building is, nothing has happened there. But, but that fear that everyone would be so worried about the, the, um, roundabout that no one would ever want to, you know, visit those sites has not happened. So it's not like the Bourne Rotary, right, or the Fresh Pond Rotaries. These are, you know, much calmer than ones that we might be used to in urban areas. Thank you, I yield my twenty seconds to whomever.
And we don't do yields. Evan Ross?
Yeah, thank you. So, um, one of the slides in the presentation that I thought was really great, I think Chris presented it, was the Town Council considerations that listed sort of all of the differences we have to consider, which is great, I, I, because some of those maybe I wouldn't have thought of off the top of my head, and it gives us a framework. Um, I wanted to just add one, um, which is, um, based on a lot of the focus of the council over the past two years, climate mitigation and resilience. I think that's also an important lens to look at this through. Years ago, I went through a, um, down or down a weird rabbit hole of looking at research papers on emissions reductions from roundabouts. And there's a lot of research out there about how, because they reduce idling, they reduce fuel consumption and, and can actually pretty substantially reduce transportation emissions. And then, of course, because you've removed the lights, you remove the safety hazard of what happens when a big storm comes through um, and wipes out power. And so there's a lot of climate research out there about why roundabouts are actually the better system for mitigation and resilience. And so I think as we're developing our climate action plan and our goals, that should always be a lens that we look through any infrastructure, um, project with. And I think with this one, there's actually research out there that's relevant to the decision we're making. So I'm hoping we can just add that as a consideration to that long list of other very important considerations. Thank you.
Alyssa?
Well, that's a great segue because while we're adding things, I don't think that any of us have a shared sense of what an environmental justice neighborhood is. This is a new term to Amherst, we've not been using this term at the Town Council in prior times, and certainly the entire community is not familiar with it. So when we, when we have a slide that says Palmeroy Village Center Town Council Considerations, and we've mentioned twice that it's environmental justice neighborhood, and we say nothing about environmental justice on that slide, then we have a problem. And so we need to figure out how to start talking about that in ways that our larger community understands. ECAC probably understands it completely, but the larger community, and I believe the shared Town Council does not. In terms of the roundabouts, um, in pushing back on the, and as Steve said, you know, it's all each our anecdotal experience, anecdata, like we like so much, is to say that a roundabout doesn't make sense for two streets is absolutely false in my reality. I live just north of the first roundabout, which is the one at north of campus, and it was two streets that were brought together, basically. And it makes perfect sense, as does the slightly odd, but now getting used to it, new one at Fearing in University. So it doesn't have to be something that's three or four or five streets coming together in an anti-goggling way. But following up on that, I was really concerned about what Myra Ross shared earlier tonight about the Triangle Roundabout being unacceptable to people with certain disabilities. This is news to those of us who supported the Triangle Roundabout. Yes, we heard that the world was going to end and then the world didn't end. But apparently there are still issues that need to be addressed. So I'm all in support of figuring out ways to both mitigate that at Triangle and to figure out how not to have that problem moving forward. And then in terms of the outreach and the DAAC, it does very clearly state in the slides that the town staff is going to be meeting with the budding property owners, meeting with commercial and business operators, focused neighborhood meetings. And so just add DAAC there, that's where it belongs, as does TAC and possibly ECAC as well. Because I don't think it's suddenly becomes TSO's job to go to those committees instead of staff when staff's meeting with all those other people in conjunction with committee members. So I think that's one of the ways we start getting used to, including DAAC, TAC and ECAC, where they belong in these processes. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy?
Yeah, and I'm glad I'm following up on Alyssa. Alyssa and I were on the select board when we went through the pros and cons and ultimately took the vote on the Triangle Street Roundabout. And as the liaison to DAAC for the select board, I can assure you that DAAC was very involved. Saying that, and to follow up on one point Alyssa made, Ms. Ross was not a member of DAAC at the time. And there was nobody with a sight impairment who was a member of DAAC at that time. So that it is a perspective that was not heard. I have talked with Myra since the completion of the Roundabout. So I've had shared, I, I, I've heard her statements to me directly. The things that we heard and know is that for most people crossing the intersection, it's actually much safer than a long intersection with a, where the crosswalk is very long because the length of time and length of distance between each point where you're in a safe zone as a pedestrian and either on the island or the sidewalk and the next point is much shorter than crossing an entire intersection. And traffic tends to speed up as lights turn yellow, as opposed to slow down. Roundabouts are in fact traffic calming devices in and of themselves if they're constructed properly. And that was very much a part of the discussion in the design of the Triangle Street intersection. The other oddities of Triangle Street to just complete, sharing our experience from the prior time was that to do a signalized intersection, there would have taken a lot of land from Kendrick Park, which we determined was a inappropriate use of the park that had been gifted to the town as a park. And there's also the oddity of the fact that it wasn't a crossed intersection, it was an X intersection. And people coming from the university and trying to make a left turn into North Pleasant Street to go up towards Cushman and North Amherst by going up East Pleasant Street were, uh, that was a very difficult and dangerous turn to make. So those were all factors that we considered that were unique to the intersection. And this is a unique intersection of itself. And therefore, we're going to have to go through a similar process now.
Right, thank you. Sarah, I saw your hand up, but you've taken it down.
I'm just wondering if my question might be addressed later. But I'm wondering, uh, when you put in a roundabout, how close the new roundabout can be to an existing building, either a business or a home? And, um, I mean, obviously we would see when, when things were drawn up, but just how that would then affect, I guess, noise as far as if there was a home or a restaurant? And also existing parking lots and how some of those businesses come together? How, um, then just because of the closeness, how egresses would work? But that's, I'm sure that's sort of down the line.
Are there any other comments from counselors at this time? And let me just say before we make the motion that obviously TSO will need to coordinate with the council in terms of agenda and setting of these meeting dates and so forth. And some of them might be done during TSO meetings or separate, but not necessarily part of council meetings. But I will work with the Chair of TSO to do that. So with that, the motion is as follows. To refer the Palmeroy Village Mass Works Grant Project to the Town Services and Outreach Committee for review and recommendation on the choice of intersection design and to guide public engagement with report back to the Town Council by May third, two thousand twenty-one. Is there a second?
Second it.
Thank you, Darcy. Any further questions or comments? Then we'll begin the vote and we begin with Griesmer and it's an I. Mandy Jo?
Aye.
Dorothy Pam?
Aye.
Evan Ross?
Aye.
George Ryan?
Yes.
Matthew Shane?
Yes.
Steve Schreiber?
Aye.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
George Schwartz?
Aye.
Shalini Balneum?
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer?
Aye.
Pat DeAngelos?
Aye.
And Darcy Demont?
Yes.
Thirteen, zero, zero, zero. Okay, thank you very much and thank you for that very thorough presentation. Clearly, this is not the last we've heard of this one. Okay, we are going to go back and do the proclamation. And in this case, I did not put this on the consent agenda because it had been indicated to me that there might need to be additional discussion. The proclamation did go to GOL and I'm going to ask George to make the report on that.
Yes, Lynn, um, this came to GOL on January twenty. And we discussed it and reviewed it and it was voted five zero to be deemed clear, consistent and actionable.
Are there council questions on the proclamation? Yes, Mandy Jo?
Look, I don't have a question, but I'd like to speak as one of the co-sponsors.
Yes, I'm sorry, I should have recognized both of you as co-sponsors. Mandy Jo Hanicky and Pat DeAngelos are the co-sponsors of this and the authors of it. So please speak to it.
Thank you. Um, you know, I, in my two years as a counselor, I have become increasingly aware that it's our duty as elected officials to call out injustices, even if they don't incur in our town. And so when I saw what happened on January sixth and how detrimental to our democracy it is and what happened is, I decided we needed to say something. And so, um, and then we received a request from Defund 413 to do something similarly. And so I reached out to Pat and said, would you help me and co-sponsor something? And so we drafted this. And one of the things I was thinking of beyond the fact that I believe we increasingly, I believe we have these duties to talk about things like this and condemn them when they happen, is that back in the summer, after the murder of George Floyd, our town manager, our chief of the schools, superintendent of the schools, but also our chief of police, came out and condemned the actions of the police officer, um, the police officers and, um, spoke out against what happened in the murder of Mr. Floyd. Yet in the aftermath of this one, we heard from the town manager and we heard from the superintendent, but we did not hear from the chief of police. And while this resolution, um, and, you know, does not come out and specifically ask for something from the chief, because we as a town council specifically cannot do that under our charter. I mean, it's one of the reasons things were changed in the draft from what came out of GOL. I was deeply disappointed that the chief didn't speak out condemning the insurrection or the actions of the insurrectionists or the disparate public safety responses between that day and the Black Lives Matters peaceful protests that occurred after the murder of George Floyd. Because if we are going to become an anti-racist town, both us as elected officials, but also our leaders, our town manager, our public safety officials, our other department heads, need to be held to higher standards and condemn things like this when they happen, especially when they have racist overtones and white supremacist overtones with, which the actions of January sixth did. So I just thought I had to say that. I hope this council will unanimously support this resolution. And I am still conflicted about not, um, about removal of one section that I know the Defund 413 supporters would like to see in it. But I do think, you know, that's something that we might not be able to do as a council. And so I'm not going to not support this because of that, but I did feel like I had to say what I just said. Thank you.
Pat, you're also a co-sponsor, do you have any comment at this time?
Um, a, a very personal one to Mandy Jo. Because just a few months ago or a few weeks ago, COVID time is very bizarre. You said you weren't very much of a social justice person, an activist, a social activist. And I'm very proud of your growth and my own, uh, in collaborating with you. And I am also hoping that the council can see the importance of this proclamation. And I second Mandy Jo's request or question about why our chief of police has not spoken out.
Alyssa?
I'm very sorry if I missed this part of, of the very effective discussion we've been having so far. But did we ask him why he hasn't done so? I mean, I'm not trying to be provocative here, I'm just, I understand that there are lines of authority that we try not to cross. But has there been any discussion with him as to why that gap has occurred?
I would call on Town Manager Bachman.
Yeah, so when we drafted, to be honest, this was, this, uh, our first statement was done very quickly on the weekend or that instantaneously, we tried to get it out right away because we were mostly thinking about children being harmed by the, by seeing the violence. And that was the focus was on our statement was, and jointly with the, um, the school department and look at that as lens. Uh, I did not invite the, the police chief in, he would have, I'm sure he would have, just like with the George Floyd, think he would have stepped up and instantaneously, I know, I think he would have done that. And I, I think, I feel like it's, it's a little bit unfair to him to disparage him for not speaking out. And it'd be more on me, I think, because I didn't invite him to join in a statement. And probably in retrospect, I should have. But at that moment, our focus was on thinking about what this, how this was so disconcerting to children. And to the other, not just children, but to people, people who, who are immigrants and to the country and who have experienced this in their own, own lands. So, um, and it seemed to me that at that moment, it was important to hear from the school superintendent, the town manager, and not necessarily the police chief in that moment. And, you know, with the, you know, the perspective of, of a couple of weeks, I think, oh, maybe we should have at that moment. But at that moment, it didn't, you know, it, it was just like, that didn't seem the right person to be standing up and saying something at that moment. And that was my, my judgment, so I take responsibility for that.
Shalini, you have your hand up.
I also would like a clarification of why we're not, or why GOL did not include the, the statement from Defund about ensuring that no Amherst Town employee was sworn to uphold. And why is it that we can't? Is that be, I mean, I understand kind of that it's not in our authority to, is that what the reasoning is?
I'm going to actually go again back to Mr. Bachman, although in your hand up as well. And I think you probably want to speak to that.
Yeah, I can state unequivocally that no Amherst police officers participated, traveled or took part in the Capitol riots. We, there are provisions in our rules and regulations and policies and procedures that officers must report any investigations, arrests, or anything where they become a plaintiff in a, in a situation like that. So if they are named, uh, they have to report that under our rules and regulations. There are, um, you know, there will be, um, we have not asked every, every officer, but this is, it's spoken in confidence from the, um, the chief of police. You know, I think there are some free speech issues that I worry about and also collective bargaining issues I worry about, but mostly free speech issues. If, if it's just traveling to a location, um, what does that mean? It, it, I think that that opens up a real different animal that we're talking about. If someone is, has been, if they're part of the insurrection, then that's, that's, that's cause for investigation for us. So that's where I think, that's where I am on this.
Is, can I?
Yes, go ahead, Shalini.
Uh, I did, I'm not feeling like we've come to a resolution around. I mean, is it worth? I mean, we can authorize that, but could, could you ask the police to, chief to come up with a statement? And not about the travel part, but at least stating that uh, no one to part in the actual, whatever that word is, insurrection, I don't know that word. But, but it feels like we, we need to, it's not, it's not feeling resolved to me that we can ask for it and then I understand the free speech. So keep the free speech part where people can travel, so let's not do that. But at least the part that we are, because I think it's not, I mean, I don't believe, I mean, I'm, I'm pretty confident that no one did from our town do that. However, I think just making these statements is more about. However, I think just making these statements is more about us reinforcing the, you know, what we believe and in our values. It's an opportunity to speak up and say, okay, this is where we stand on these issues, even though it's redundant or whatever. So it seems like it would be important to have some sort of a statement, even if it's not part of the council.
Would you want to speak further to that, Mr. Bachman?
Yeah. I don't have a good answer, response at this moment.
Yeah, I think it's something to think about.
Yeah.
Andy, you have your hand up.
Yes. To be real quick about it, I raised the issue at the GOL meeting because the charter is very clear about the town manager's responsibility for providing all supervision of employees and administering the collective bargaining agreements. And we're talking about people who are part of collective bargaining. And it is not something that is specified as a council responsibility, nor are we empowered to make that, to, to request information along those lines as, as in the charter. And what I said at the GOL meeting is that I felt very uncomfortable with the idea that it would be an actionable item unless we had opinion from the town attorney that it was an appropriate step to take under the council, under our charter rather. And I just didn't feel that it was worth taking the time to hold up this particular action in order to get a town attorney opinion on a very narrow, but a very important point in that the easier thing to do would be to make the amendment that was made.
Sean, we are supposed to be using the clock on these as well. Alyssa.
Yeah, so following up on that concept from the charter, one of the, the areas I struggle with in the charter is Section 2.8 Investigations and Access to Information, because this was a non, this was not a part of the Old Town Government Act. And there's a section about investigations and then information requests and then town manager. And so the part under town manager says it's specific information to it on any matter within the jurisdiction of the town council. So I totally get that that's not the police force, right? They're not under our jurisdiction. But then why are there the first two parts talking about investigations, investigating the affairs of the town and the conduct or performance of any town agency? And then information requests for multiple member bodies? I don't, I don't grasp the difference there, so maybe that is a future town attorney concept.
Whenever we come to issues of the charter, I always look at Mandy Jo and say, do you want to comment?
It could take us hours, so I don't think it needs to be dealt with tonight.
Okay, right. Are there any further questions? All right, then the motion for the proclamation is as follows. Motion to adopt the resolution condemning the January 6th, 2021 insurrection and violence at the US Capitol as presented. Is there a second?
Hanke seconds.
Thank you. And we're going to move immediately to a vote, starting with Mandy Jo.
Aye.
Dorothy Pam.
Aye.
Evan Ross.
Aye.
George Ryan.
Yes.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Aye.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz.
Aye.
Shalani Bellmelm.
Yes.
Melissa Brewer.
Aye.
Pat DeAngelo.
Aye.
Dorothy Demont.
Aye.
Lynn Greismer is an aye, that's thirteen zero zero zero. We are going to move on to the town manager's goals. And let me preface this by saying, we started out with one request for a change that is involved with the town manager's goals, and that's the one that was relevant to the presentation night, which was the Public Safety Presentation, Public Safety Working Group Committee. So I'm going to ask that we deal with that one and see if we have the ability to vote on the changes as requested in that motion. There are two others that have then been brought forward. One deals with housing and specifically with the, adding to the town manager's goals, the exploration of a permanent, either seasonal and or full-time, a year-round shelter for the homeless. And then the third, that is a motion that got added in, really updates the racial equity and social justice goal as it stands. My opinion, as your president, is that these other two should be referred to GOL because they could tie us up in knots for hours, and I'm trying to shorten our meetings. So I'm going to go back to the first goal. The first goal is the public safety goal, and I'm going to read the motion that we amended, by the way, since the original thing. And that is to amend the town council performance goals for the town manager, July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021, adopted September 4, 2020, by changing under policy goals, Section 2, Community Health and Safety, the dates, results are presented to the town council from January 31st, January 31st, 2020 to January 31st, 2020. If we do that, the amendment would read that the approval of the FY21 operating budget is made with the explicit understanding with the town manager that two upcoming anticipated vacancy, vacant positions in the police department's budget not be filled until the town manager, in consultation with the town council and residents of Amherst, has fully explored alternative options of providing services and presented the results to the town council no later than March 31st, 2021. Pat.
I seem to remember that I believe it was Ms. Owen, Brianna Owen, who talked about the report not being ready that they needed until June 21st, June 30th, 2021, to complete their report. So if that is true, why aren't we extending the freeze to that time period?
I'm gonna ask for a second on the motion and then...
I'm sorry.
Second. Thank you. And then Paul, can you respond to Pat's question?
Yeah, so initially, the, the working group has two sections in their charge. One is to look at an alternative form of policing, which is what was supposed to be done by this month, and that will be March 31st. And that's where we wanted to have the resources available to shift if that were, if they come up something different. And that's still on the table. The other is more of an oversight of the police department, and that's the second phase, which, and they're still targeting that for June 30th.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alyssa, you have your hand up.
So I touched base with the town manager today because the charge we were provided with this request has not yet been revised to show that the first written report to the town manager by January 15th, obviously that date has passed and that written report hasn't been provided. So I'm asking that he just clarify that although the town council worked with him on the initial charge, it is my belief that the town council is no longer, had never really was, in charge of the charge for the Community Safety Working Group. What we're in charge of is the deadline that this motion is the subject of. But just to clarify, because this is all new to all of us, is that the Community Safety Working Group's reports written in their charge are, the, the date for the first one, the written report on alternative options to public safety services currently provided by the Amherst Police Department, is going to be changed by the town manager, not by the town council, to March 15th, because that still gives that two-week gap, right? That's how we set it up originally, two weeks before it was due to the town council. So I'm assuming that that's going to happen with the charge based on the town manager's action after our meeting tonight, assuming we agree on a date. They'll pick something then for the Community Safety Working Group that's two weeks prior to that, so that their charge is current.
And I'm seeing a nod from the town manager. Do you want to speak to that, Paul?
I, I agree 100% of that, that once the council says that, that, that the March 31st date is okay, then the charge will be adjusted.
Great. Is there any other question? Alyssa, you still have your hand up, but I assume it's because you haven't taken it down. Are there any other questions? Darcy, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just wonder how, how the state works with the whole budget process and the police department humming to the finance committee with their projected budget. How does that all interrelate?
So yes, it, the idea, I think the council chose January 31st so that there's plenty of time to be able to take any recommendation from the working group or the town manager to implement it in the current budget and also next year's budget. So this delays it for two months. It still gives us, gives me time to implement anything that they want in next year's budget. My budget doesn't get delivered to the town council till May 1st. So that still gives us a month in there to, if there are substantive changes for next year's budget as well, to be incorporated into the budget process.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Darcy, you still have your hand up, but I assume it's because you haven't taken it down. Okay. So the motion has been made and seconded. Are there any other questions? Okay, then I'm going to begin the roll call with Dorothy Pam.
Aye.
Evan Ross.
Aye.
George Ryan.
Yes.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Eve Schreiber.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz.
Aye.
Shalani Bellmelm.
Yes.
Melissa Brewer.
Aye.
Pat DeAngelo.
Aye.
Dorothy Demont.
Yes.
Lynn Greismer is an aye. Mandy Jo Hanke.
Aye.
Thirteen zero zero zero. Okay, we are going to move on to the presentation on, no, I'm sorry. We still have to do the referral of the two recommended motions that change the goals on the housing authority, housing affordability, and racial equity, social justice. Before we do that motion, I would like George Ryan just to speak to the purpose of the recommended change to the housing affordability goal.
Sure, Lynn. I'm in a somewhat awkward position because I actually don't support the motion, but we'll get to that eventually, I suppose. In other words, the motion to refer. But a number of us have been concerned about, I mean, we've been very fortunate, thanks to the hard work of, of the Craig Storrs and the town staff and the town manager and stepping forward of the, the UU here in Amherst. And we have more than adequately met the challenge this year with the seasonal shelter. But come the end of the season, as it's called, Universal, Universalist Church is going to want their community room back. My understanding is that the Baptist Church is no longer interested in being part of the shelter solution. And so we're going to find ourselves, again, as we have in the past, looking for a seasonal shelter in Amherst. And so what a number of us have mentioned and talked about informally is approaching the town manager and asking him to consider looking into the possibility of finding, or whether it's possible to find some kind of surplus town land or property and/or work with the local community to see if we can find a, a permanent solution to the problem, whether it be seasonally, year-round. And so that's the, the basic thrust behind this motion, that we take a step and ask the town manager to seriously look into what is possible, either from the town's resources or working in cooperation with private individuals or groups here in the town to effect a permanent site or solution to the, to the seasonal shelter issue.
Are there any other comments on this particular one? Please raise your hand, using the raise hand function. Darcy.
Yeah, I just wonder what the purpose of a referral would be. I guess I feel, I feel like we're probably fairly ready to hold on this. I may not be right about that, but, but I am anyway. I just don't understand why, what would be the purpose of a referral?
This has never been discussed at the council meeting before, or at least not in recent, in the recent months, I should say. And rather than spend a lot of time in discussion at council, the idea was to send it to GOL, which is the group that is in fact, over, does, does review the council, the town manager's goals, and comes back to the council with recommendations. That was the whole reason of doing it, rather than sitting and having a big debate on this particular issue. But, Mandy Jo, you have your hand up and you're on GOL.
Yeah, I'm not commenting as a member of GOL, but I guess my only thing is, I have one question, and if the manager could answer it now, then I'm not sure I'd need a referral either. And that is, does the manager think this is a reasonable thing that can be completed or substantially made progress on, given all the other goals that we have in the next five months, since there's only five months left in this year?
Mr. Bach, Paul.
Yeah, so it is a priority for, for town staff, so, and I think it's important, you know, it's good for the council to put in on this as well. And, you know, the, whether it's part of the goal or not, we'll be working on this. So, because, and I think it's a, it's, because there's an urgency, as Mr. Ryan mentioned, Council Ryan mentioned, is that there's a, there's a date certain when the shelter will be leaving the UU. And we need to be in, working in conjunction with Craig Storrs to make sure there's a place for that to happen again come November 1.
Okay. George.
Yeah, I think I would like us to go on record. I really don't see the value of sending to GOL. If it goes to anyone, it should probably go to TSO, in the sense that it's about a policy decision and has many different impacts. But I, I agree with Darcy. I think maybe we're both wrong, but I think that there has been a strong consensus amongst my colleagues that this is an issue that we need to address. As Mr. Bachman just pointed out, time is pressing. November, the season will begin again and we will be back at ground zero. And this, I'm not, maybe the town can't find a solution, but I think I'd like us to go on record as a body, asking him to do what in fact he is doing and to give him a sense that this is a priority for us.
Okay, then in that case, Athena, can you find the original set of motions where this was in fact a motion?
I believe I've got it and could read it.
Athena, then Mandy Jo, why don't you make the motion?
Okay. Let me just get to the right page. That motion would be, oh wait, that's the, hold on.
I can read it as well, Mandy, if you want.
Oh, I'm sorry, George, fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you've got it, it was sent to you, but that, the draft motion would read that in the document titled Town Council Performance Goals for the Town Manager, July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021, the following text be added at the end of Section 5 of the Policy Goals entitled Housing Affordability. Quote, "And exploring the possibility of creating a permanent seasonal or year-round shelter in Amherst either through the repurposing of surplus town building or land and/or through working in partnership with concerned community groups or individuals to realize this goal", end quote. That would be inserted at the end of... That would be inserted at the end of uh item in section five. After item three, we come now item four.
Is there a second?
Second, DeAngelis.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this? Alyssa, you have your hand up.
Yes, it's just a variation on what's already on our motion sheet. Our motion sheet is fine. It just needs a couple of adjustments, which includes the fact that what George just read off, it needs to say adopted September fourteenth, twenty twenty, just like we did under the previous one. So it's just a matter of slicing and pasting, but all the words are there.
Athena, are you clear enough on that, or do you need that read again?
Oh, I I've got it. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? Then I'm going to move to a vote, and I'm going to start with Evan Ross.
Yes.
George Ryan.
Yes.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Yes.
Steve, uh Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Sarah Schwartz.
Aye.
Shalane Baumhahn.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
Aye.
Uh, Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Darcy Demont.
Yes.
Lynn Greysmer is an aye. Mandy Jo Hanke.
Aye.
Dorothy Pam.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. Now we'll move on to the um suggested additions to the racial equity and social justice goal, which is goal six of our town manager goals. And Alyssa, you were the one that uh suggested this. Would you please speak to it?
Yes, so as it so happens, I had a chance to see the motion sheet, and I saw the one about housing, and I was like, hey, while we're working on this already. So um since we were already digging into the town manager's goals, um and as you can see on your motion sheet, basically, all this one does is it doesn't change any of the items one, two, and three that are under the goal. What it does is it inserts the additional resolutions that we've had since the one about George Floyd, right? So the ones about structural racism and because we're so timely, the one we just did tonight. Because it's important, once we do these things, right, just like historically, we we know that town meeting would get excited about doing a really cool thing and then like plop, like it got sent to McGovern and everybody else, but like, what did we really do with it? And so what we're trying to do is show that we really are engaging in a path of remedy, and one of the many ways we do that is we include all these resolutions that address these very issues about ensuring all community members feel a part of and are listened to, for community free of intimidation, et cetera. So it just makes sense to go ahead and if we're going to mention any of our proclamations and resolutions, to go ahead and include these two newer ones as well while we're already making edits. Because we need to kind of keep them together.
Is there any further? Well, you know, let me ask for a motion then, because it appears to me that what we would like to do is have a motion to go ahead and pass this versus a motion to refer. So Alyssa.
So I think if Athena could get the wording exactly right, much like George did earlier, and that is along the lines of, and my screen's not cooperating with me right now, um sorry, it's kind of like scrolling madly past where I want to go. But looking at the motion sheet itself, instead of it being a referral, it should basically just reflect the same kind of language we just used with the previous motion, which is to
May I help?
amend the Town Council Performance Goals for the Town Manager, July one, twenty twenty to June thirty, twenty twenty one, adopted September fourteen, twenty twenty, by changing under policy goal, and in this case, it's six VI, racial equity and social justice. So that it reads, so that it adds in the two additional resolutions, the Town Council the Town Council Resolution affirming the town of Amherst's commitment to end structural racism and achieve racial equity for black residents, adopted on December seventh, twenty twenty, and the Town Council Resolution condemning the January sixth, twenty twenty one insurrection and violence at the US Capitol, adopted twenty twenty, January twenty five, twenty twenty one, so that the section reads, and then it goes on in full objective to explore, recommend, and implement policies and procedures that address racial equity and social justice consistent with then it lists all three of the items that we're now including here, and then it says that one, ensure all community members feel and are a part of Amherst and feel and are protected, listened to, and served by their public servants. Two, foster a community free of fear, intimidation, and violence. And three, incorporate significant involvement of BIPOC residents in shaping these policies and procedures.
Is there a second?
Second, Ryan.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, uh we're going to move to the vote. George Ryan is first.
Yes.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Eve Schreiber.
Aye.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Sarah Schwartz.
Aye.
Shalane Baumhahn.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
Aye.
Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Darcy Demont.
Yes.
Lynn Greysmer is aye. Mandy Jo Hanke.
Aye.
Dorothy Pam.
Aye.
Evan Ross.
Aye.
Unanimous thirteen zero zero zero. We are going to move on to the seven B, which is the proposal for anti-racism training for counselors, and I'm going to call on Pat DeAngelis and Shalane Baumhahn to discuss the proposal.
I I want to read a little bit from the proposal because it's reflective of some of what happened at the Community Safety Working Group, um where council members have inter- have participated in the conversation, not just in their last Saturday's meetings, but at other times. And there is a sense that that's okay, uh when it um and so uh we are really a council with a limited racial and socio socioeconomic diversity, and we are not representative of the larger Amherst Amherst community. Our experiences and understanding about structural racism and white supremacy are limited. And often, and this is the critical part that reflects on things that have happened, our bias is often unconscious. And so in order to analyze issues from more than one perspective, we need to develop the ability to listen with understanding and integrate um seemingly conflicting conflicting needs and viewpoints. And we need to do this work together in an environment built on trust in each other and in our desire for and ability to change. I feel like if we are going to become the anti-racist town that I think uh is a desire of every council member uh and the staff, then we need to do the work, and it is personal work. Um, and I know from my own experience that it can be intimidating, um it can be um scary to do this work, but we have an opportunity, and Shalane is going to explain the workshop and the group. But we have an opportunity to come together, um to look at ourselves in a in an environment that where we can trust one another. Shalane?
Yeah, thank you, Pat. Um I'm going to talk a little bit about what we are proposing as a training, but before that, I just wanted to share two things about the training that thanks to Pat, I got to participate in. And uh so it's personal, and it was really powerful for me. So two things that I took away from the training that we did um with the People's Institute. The first thing that I learned from that training was the system is not broken. It's working exactly how it's supposed to be working. And that was really powerful for me. Yeah, the system is not broken. It's working exactly how it's supposed to work, and unless we make undoing racism or parity and take deliberate steps, we are perpetuating these systems of racism. The second thing that was really powerful for me was also that why do we need to do this work? Of course, with three hundred years or more overdue. But besides that, is that it's all of our well-being is tied to ending racism. So this is not that we're doing this for those people, or it's all of us need to do it, because no one is safe unless we're all safe. And we can only flourish as a community when we create conditions for all of us to flourish. So and besides that, as Pat said, we need a safe space to do this deep work. This is hard, it's deep, and you know, just the every other day, we're coming up with new situations that require deep thought and reflection and honesty and and safety. Even for us as counselors, this is very vulnerable stuff, and for us to really learn and change deeply, we cannot we have to have the safety to be able to ask and share what's going on for us. And if we don't have that opportunity, we can't really change deeply. So with that in mind, we're proposing um that the council participate in the Undoing Racism Workshop with the People's Institute for Survival and Beyond. Uh, this is a virtual training. It's two and a half days long and is limited to twenty to twenty two people. The cost uh would be paid by the council budget and is about three hundred and fifty dollars per attendee. Um, this organization is really creditable credible. It was founded in nineteen eighty and um by community organizers Ronald Chisen of New Orleans and Dr. Jim Dunn of Yellow Springs. It's impacted over one million people around the world with over a hundred teachers. And um I just believe it'll be a great opportunity for us to develop a common language to to even talk about these issues, to understand racism, to understand how we can then work with our constituents with more sensitivity and um, yeah, there's just so many benefits. So we'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay, um Sean, I want to make sure that we have the timer. Um, questions from the council. I'm going to start with one or two that I have, and then we'll see what other people have. How long, when you say two and a half days, are we saying eight hours days? Can you give be a little more clear about what that means?
Yeah, usually the first night, which is a Friday night, is from five thirty to about eight. Um, and then Saturday and Sunday would be between nine and five, nine and four um with a break for a reasonable, seriously reasonable break for lunch.
Is there any way to break it up so it's not a solid two and a half days?
I think that would be a mistake. I don't think they will do that, but I also think it's a mistake because part of the process is really diving in and and focusing for a period of time. And, you know, we're all home anyway. Uh, it doesn't mean we don't have other commitments and things like that. We all do. Um, but I think that this is a commitment that would help us move miles in terms of creating bridges with the BIPOC community uh and building trust with the BIPOC community.
I'm going to take questions. Mandy Jo.
My question is similar. I support this initiative. Um, I obviously have scheduling concerns, um especially as one of the few counselors that has a kid at home that is at home on weekends, and if this is on weekends, but um so so my question relates, I guess, to would it be expected that we are all um doing the same training on the same weekend, um such that, you know, I I don't even know whether we could find a weekend that all thirteen of us are available, but beyond that, if we aren't, or would we be offered a number of different choices that we could pick the weekend that is um most fits in our schedule, even if not other counselors are attending that? I I guess I'm asking what the vision for that type of participation is from you.
Um, Shalane, do you want to say something first?
Yeah, I I feel uh I in our discussion, we were going to plan for something out in April, so everyone, we would have enough time to plan and do a you know, that thing, what's it called?
Doodle pull.
Doodle pull, thank you. Uh, so we can try and find, and if we're not able to, then we probably could plan for having to. Pat, go ahead.
I think, though, that the reason that we are hoping we can bring the council together and hopefully um Mr. Bauchman and other staff members who is we work together and we work together collaboratively. Um, and this is a chance for us to be um both learning, uh facilitate each other's learning and to be vulnerable with each other in a way that we um our society doesn't normally allow us to be. Um, I think it would expand our ability to function as a group of people um on so many levels, uh as well as beginning to move us towards a real and and a deep and true anti-racist stance personally. Um, so and we would have to, we could decide to spread people out and have some kind of um way make, you know, a way to make sure that everybody is followed through. But there's something, there's power in are this group doing it together?
A clarification, is there a minimum number of people that have to enroll in order for them to run the class?
That I don't know.
Okay, we need to find that out, so that if we ended up with two options or something, can they still do it, or would they be adding in other people, which might be fine as well? Okay. Uh, Alyssa, you have your hand up.
Thank you. Having participated in a variety of different types of anti-racism training since I entered the school committee in two thousand and two, um I can appreciate that there's a huge variety of ways to do this, and while the schedule is somewhat daunting, I also understand the purpose of having that intensive period of time, because I know that some of the things that I was engaged in that didn't meet very regularly, it was kind of hard to keep up the conversation in between, particularly because then somebody would have a scheduling conflict, and so it wouldn't be the same exact people associated with the particular conversation. So following up on on what Lynn said about minimums and then just the scheduling in general, I think what appeals most to me about doing it through you know, this particular venue at this time, rather than just saying, we'll all go off and do some kind of training, right? That we should just check that off, that we've all done it, like our ethics training or something, is that the I I understand the purpose of the group doing it together, much like when we try and have retreats and have all of us there. But I have two concerns. One is that if all thirteen of us can't do it, but eleven of us do it, that's going to feel a little weird to the two that aren't there, but so I'm I'm just not sure how people feel about that. But then the other part of it is, is if it's going to be thirteen of us, plus maybe Paul, plus maybe Athena, whether they think that's appropriate or not is another conversation. And then five random people from the community, like that doesn't, no, that I want to be clear. That's not discussed anywhere here in this proposal, that it's only for us.
I thought I thought it was. I apologize.
And so being clear on that, and so the number that you're talking about that's greater than thirteen would be the expectation that staff would do that, and I can understand that some staff may not necessarily feel comfortable doing that with us. So I guess I'd like to hear a little bit more about that.
Right, I it's um I
Excuse me, Pat. Sean, we need to have the clock. Thank you.
One of the um I've lost my train of thought. I apologize.
I'm sorry, Pat.
No, that's okay. Um, one of the things that um it it is the reason that we're opening it to more staff, uh and it would be their decision uh is because we feel like we work together, and yes, there are the counselors, but there's also staff. But my real point was that we're not, I'm not, I'm trying to make sure that we uh feel that we are in a in a in a safe space. Uh, and inviting outside community members feels that does not feel at this particular point comfortable to me. I've been talking to other people about, uh, you know, Deborah Snow, about the possibility of ongoing conversations about race that included residents, and I think that may be a place that we get to. But as a white person who has, since when I first started doing this work and in workshops, and each time I do it, I need to and each time I do it, I need to feel that I can say anything or do anything. And it's not gonna be then spread out through um my community, whether that was living at Pomeroy Lane Cooperative, being part of the council or um being a member of a church, which was um the case in the seventies when I did participate in my first uh rate anti-racism training. So it's very important that we and and I'm gonna go on, I have a little bit more time, this is weird. The other thing is we thought very much of having um the ch- um Chief of Police, and I actually hope that he would want to do it, and then um Chief Nelson from the Fire Department, Jennifer Moisten, and all of a sudden, I'm saying, wait a minute. Um, we're gonna invite two uh people of color, maybe more, I don't know how many are on staff. I know um Elwood, yeah, and I'm blanking on his last name, who's a maintenance person, is a person of color and a friend, but um I don't want them to have to speak for the entire BIPOC community or Black community. And I think that this is a time where um the trainers and the facilitators are people of color and they're used to working both with integrated groups and uh BIPOC groups only and white groups only, and I think-
That's it.
Um, Darcy Dumont, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I um support this idea. I think it's a good idea. Um, I would try to make myself available to do it. Um, I do, I did Google uh the link that you put in your report and um I I, it looks like it wasn't available during the pandemic.
Um, no, the training we did was virtual that Shalene and, Shalene and I participated in. And this would be a virtual training and um
I just recommend, look at the link because it has a big red uh notice on it saying not-
Probably not in person, that's all.
I don't know.
Because we just did it during COVID. We took it during COVID virtually.
Recently.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I will look, but-
Mm-hmm.
Steve Schreiber, you have your hand up.
Yeah, so I I'm gonna echo what everyone else said, that I think that this is incredibly useful. Um, somebody with a full-time job, I would love to make it work, but will um, that's gonna be the real challenge for this many people. I guess I I have some technical questions here. One is procurement. So we're talking about multiple thousands of dollars? And do we have to get proposals from other groups or is this gonna be a sole source provider? Yes, okay.
Less than ten thousand dollars and we don't need to, I believe.
Okay. Um, the second one is open meeting law. So if we all meet as a group, isn't that a-
No, it's not. I've also, I've already contacted the Attorney General's Office twice, as a matter of fact.
You don't wanna use up my three minutes, so thank you. And then the uh third one is timing. So in April, which is of the date discussed, we have six months left together as a council. And you know, a lot can be accomplished in that six months. But to me, this sounds like an amazing kind of training or that should happen at the beginning of every council term. So that doesn't mean it can't happen again in December when the new, or I'm sorry, January, when the new council, when is it, December? It's January, right?
January is when they're sworn in.
And my math is off here, so we have eight months left together. So it sounds like an amazing thing to do every January. Um, this being, but so it may end up, we do it twice or whatever. But I I think that we should think about that also, just the timing of, you know, a reasonably big expense for council that will be, is almost our term together is in the late afternoon. It's in the twilight.
Uh, Evan Ross.
Yeah, so thank you to um Pat Shalene for putting the work into this proposal. Um, and I think it's a good idea for the council to do an anti-racism training. But I did just air my one concern, which you probably will expect. Um, is that I do worry about setting the precedent of committing the counselors to a two and a half day training, um only because and this is where I'm conflicted, because I know you can't do a two-hour training in anti-racism and be like, oh, all right, we're good now. I've done these things, I know they take time, I know they take um in investment. At the same time, I do have some concerns um at a time when we're trying, especially going into an election where we're trying to send the message that the counselor job is not a part-time job, that it's very workable. Um, and one of the things that I've really tried to do is carve out weekends as time when I don't have to do council stuff, which is why most of you notice I don't respond to your emails on the weekends. Um, I'm perfectly willing to give a weekend to do this, but I do just worry a little bit about a precedent of people looking and saying, not only do I need to do six-hour council meetings twice a month on Mondays and committee meetings and district meetings and go to public forums, but also there might be mandatory trainings that take up an entire weekend. And so I'm not arguing against this and I'm perfectly willing to do it. But I, but I am saying that it always does concern me a little bit anytime we create an additional requirement or an additional expectation of counselors. Um, because I have the privilege to be able to do it. I don't have a family, I don't use my weekends to to take my kids to soccer, whatever parents do. Um, but but I do wanna air that concern.
I I just wanna reply, but in the last two years, I mean, this time it was different. Uh, we've gone to Boston to the MMA conference away from our families on the weekends. The town paid for it, nobody had any problems with that.
I hope that happens.
So um, I think if your desire is to do the work in terms of looking at ourselves as participating in a system of white supremacy, then you're gonna put aside a weekend. And I feel strongly that what you will get in back is so much richer than either Shalene and I, Shalene or I could explain to you. Um, and I and I, you know, whether it becomes mandatory for every council uh in the future, uh that'd be great, uh but that's not my goal. My goal is that we have been wrestling in many ways uh with two ve- two very unique uh issues as a council, COVID. You know, none of us ever anticipated anything like that. But we're also really dealing and and wrestling with racism in the United States of America, which has been here and is embedded in the capitalist syst-, you know, you don't, I don't need to go on and say all of those things. But we really need to do this and do it now. Um, and
I'm-
For the life of our, for our own lives and the life of our community.
Dorothy, I'm gonna take your comment and then I'm gonna make a suggestion, please. Go ahead, Dorothy.
Um, having been part of jobs such as this, in the past, I I really am sad that it would have to be virtual because the in-person is much stronger. Um, in response to Evan, in terms of of making the job seem doable to possible new uh counselors, we used to deal with this by offering food. Um, well, maybe you can deliver us food, who knows? But my feeling is sooner is better than later because I've got some stuff I have to do once I get my vaccination and I can go someplace. I've got, I've got things to do. Right now, I'm stuck at home and I'd rather do it now than in April because April I hope to be visiting some new possible in-laws, et cetera. So um, that's why. Yeah, I, it's, I've got some exciting stuff going on, yeah.
So I would, I would like to suggest that uh Shalene and um Pat uh go back to the source and come up with a proposed uh set of weekends and that we use those weekends to poll
Mm-hmm.
for how we can get, how close we can get to getting everybody involved in one or two sessions. And I would suggest that you take those weekends as early as March,
Mm-hmm.
as late as the end of April and then stop with that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Can I just, oh, yeah, sorry, go ahead. Can I offer a few clarifications to you that um came up? That there were people who who stepped aside for some commitments for an hour or two. So that, you know, there are all of those things. It's not like once you're locked in, you're, I mean, the preference is you're locked in. But um given that we'll have enough time to plan, hopefully you all can get that. And secondly, this is not just work for the council, this is just as human beings. I think we're all gonna benefit and be just better people because of it. So uh we, I just feel that we're lucky that as counselors we get to do it. Uh, I don't, and 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 um third thing is, we didn't bring this up yet, but in case we need to split it up, is there a willingness to invite other counselors from other neighborhoods? It's like a regional thing we could be building also and invite other counselors to maybe be part of it. And that way they could be, in case we need to, we could have two blocks.
And let's find out what the deal is in terms of minimum registration, okay? And do a poll before we go there. Alyssa, do you have another point?
Just a point about that last new idea of having other people, and the answer for me is no. That, that's why I would be interested in this particular range of two and, of two and a half days is if it's us, um because of our shared culture and what we're trying to get moved forward because of what we're trying to learn. I'm happy to participate in other trainings with lots of other people and have done so over the years, but that doesn't feel like the right move right now. So finding a good date for a huge percentage of us seems like the only way to go.
Okay. Um, is there any further discussion at this point? I think we're going to then uh as fast as we can get those possible dates, do a poll and uh move forward, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shalene.
I personally look forward to the training and thank you, Pat and Shalene, for putting this together. Um, the next item on the agenda is the, uh, there's no town manager appointments, but we have some appointments. And let me just jump over and say in serious and significant consultation with each of you, I did make the appointments to our, to our council committees. Um, but we still, as a council, need to decide uh on who will represent us at JCPC, Joint Capital and Planning Committee. Who will represent us on the Budget Coordinating Group? And let me just mention, we haven't actually called this group together, but in case we needed to, we still need representatives. And then we need to relook at the liaisons to our multiple member bodies. So let me start by saying, as you know, I do extensive polling of counselors. I pull that together and provide for you both a history of who has represented us where um in first year of our council, the second year. And then I also give you a sense of the priorities different people have placed on various things. Um, so given that, the names of, there are five people who are interested in the JCPC appointment. Uh, the, let me just mention, the way that the charge reads is there can be no more than two people from the Finance Committee, but one definitely cannot come from Finance, okay? And the five people, and I'm just gonna explain, are Counselor Griesmer, I am on the Finance Committee. Counselor Hanke, she is not on the Finance Committee. Counselor Ryan is not on the Finance Committee. Counselor Shane is on the Finance Committee and Counselor Steinberg is on the Finance Committee. So you can pick, you, what you cannot do is put three people from the Finance Committee on this. So what I would like to do is um ask individuals who are interested to make a statement of their interest. And then um I think we should ask each counselor to name their top three. So let's start in reverse order. Counselor Steinberg.
Can I get some more potato chips?
Uh, uh, thank you.
Did you put an order in for me as well?
I want mine French fries. Okay, enough of that. Go ahead, Andy.
I'm holding off until everybody's got their food order placed before I go and say anything. Now, I have been on uh Joint Capital Planning Committee for um a number of years, both in the original Finance Committee on a select board and um from the council. And uh so one of the things that um I offered to the committee, as you consider it, is the history and under, and somebody who has been through various years of the history. The other thing that I feel very strongly about is that I think that there is a, an important link between Finance Committee and what uh Joint Capital Planning Committee um is doing and recommending a capital plan to the town manager. Because the capital plan has to fit in with the um budget as a whole, that there are um expenditures that at times can fall under operating or can fall under capital. Um, and that um one of the charges to the uh Finance Committee is to think about the large projects which come out of the amount that's available for capital. So that as we divide capital um and say that we're gonna give uh six, seven, eight, ten, up to ten percent of tax revenue for um capital purposes, that um that includes paying back prior capital debt, um new major capital expenditures envisioned in the future. And uh the uh integration therefore is very strong.
Okay.
So uh I, that is why I put my name forward.
Okay, and we're gonna keep our remarks short, maybe even a whole lot less than three minutes. Kathy Shane.
Um, I, when I ran for town council, JCPC was always the committee I wanted to be on. And I had, did not succeed in the first year, so I made myself an understudy. And I li- went to literally every meeting but sat out in the public comment area. Last year, I, this past year, I did get on and was appointed or elected chair. And it was a most unusual year in that we had almost no capital to spend during the year. So we didn't write the normal report and we didn't go through the normal backlog. And so I would really like to be on a second year. Um, and as Andy said, what I've found is that the link between really knowing what's in that backlog and the queue and our operating budget and thinking in the future is critical. You just, you just can't get a picture of the total town without knowing both. So um I would appreciate being on both. I have more than enough time. I'm not under time constraints. And if, for those of you who worry that it conflicts with the um Elementary School Committee, the good thing about JCPC, it's the concentrated period of time that we have and it, the work is done before the work of the other intensity, the other committee will start. So I have plenty of time. I'm only on one council committee, the Finance Committee. Um, several of the other people are on two, not counting JCPC. So I would really like to continue. Thank you.
Counselor Ryan.
Well, I have held back in my first two years from putting my name forward for either of these bodies, um partly because of sheer ignorance. Um, but I feel like I'm ready and very much motivated to dig in. I'm deeply concerned about the financial well-being of the town. I'm deeply concerned, as all of us are, about the capital projects. Um, so I feel I'm ready and definitely um eager to serve. So I would be open to serving on both bodies. Um, I do have two other committees I serve on, um but the good news is I've retired.
From your other job that used to pay you back?
That other job, yeah, right.
Okay. Um, Counselor Hanke.
Yeah, uh, I think all I would say is I've enjoyed serving on this committee, um trying to figure out how what its role is in a new form of government, and I think that's still sort of evolving at this point. Um, and I would love to continue service on it.
Okay, and I'm going to say I was on this the first year. I went to the meetings the second year but was not on it. And I'm actually going to withdraw my name. And I'm actually going to withdraw my name in the interest of allowing another councillor to have this experience. I do want to point out that I felt it was necessary to put my name here so people understand that this is where my interests are. Uh, I am continuing to serve on the Finance Committee. However, I also have given up GOL so that other councillors can have that experience. So it's really down to uh, councillors Hanke, Ryan, Shane and Steinberg. And I'm just going to go through and I want you to name your top three. Athena, I'm going to probably need you to um, help me keep a record, okay? Uh, hold on. Okay. So uh, we start in this case with Cathy Shane.
Okay, and Lynn, can I just clarify? It's up to two finance, but it doesn't have to be two finances. Is that correct? Okay, then I, um, it's Mandy, George and Cathy.
Okay, Steve Schreiber.
Um, can I pass? Can you come back to me?
And Andy Steinberg.
Um, Mandy, George and Andy.
Uh, Sarah Schwartz.
Andy, Cathy and Mandy.
Andy, Cathy and Mandy. Okay, got it. Um, Shalene Baumell.
Um, Cathy Shane, um, Mandy and George.
Alyssa Brewer.
I'm sorry, I'm struggling a little here too. If you could come back to me also, that would be great. I'm not counting votes. I'm just trying to make sure I understand what I'm doing.
Okay, Kathy Angeles.
Hanke, Steinberg and Shane.
Darcy Dumont. Darcy.
Sorry, um, I think I'm going to just vote for two, Cathy and Mandy Joe.
Griesmer's going to hold, Hanke.
I'm go, gonna vote for um, Hanke, Ryan and Shane.
Dorothy Pam.
Ryan, Shane and Steinberg.
Evan Ross.
Uh, this is a tough vote, y'all, and especially doing it separately from the BCG, I just want to say. I wish we could do it together, but I think that I'm going to go with uh, Shane, Hanke and Steinberg.
George Ryan.
Uh, Steinberg, Shane, Ryan.
Right, and then back to Steve Schreiber.
George, Cathy, Andy.
Okay, uh, and Alyssa.
Hanke, Ryan and Steinberg.
Four-way tie.
No, I've got, I've got 10 for Shane. I've got nine for Hanke. And I've got eight each for Ryan and Steinberg. Is that correct?
That's what, I got the same. I got the same. Let count, Lynn.
Athena? Yes?
Then may I ask if everyone has voted?
No, I'm the only one that hasn't. I was trying to avoid it.
Well, I could, I would withdraw my name then. I'd prefer to have Stan, Andy. If it's between Andy and myself, I would withdraw.
All right, so it's Andy, Shane and Hanke. Okay, that one's done. We're moving on to the next one and I'm going to make it easy by withdrawing from that one because if we get into a really serious budget discussion, I'm going to have to be involved in it anyway. So let's just move on and because in this case, there are two people from Finance, oh, I'm sorry, Budget Coordinating Group, oh, you're from Finance Committee. So it has to be Finance.
No, it doesn't. That's wrong.
Thank you. It's Ryan and Shane. Okay, any problem with that? Want to vote it? Mandy Joe.
Um, we should check the rules of procedure. Because the charge doesn't require it from Finance, but I wonder if that came from the rules. So before we vote, and I, I'm, in saying that, I would still love to see George Ryan on this, but.
Uh, Athena, or someone, can you quickly pull up our rules and see whether or not this committee requires that you have to be on Finance?
Oh, wait, sorry, it wasn't the rules, it was the finance. I'm, I'm trying to remember where the conflict was. It was the Finance Charge and I think GOL fixed it. So hopefully we fixed it, so there's no conflict.
No, I was just going to say, maybe we should just fix the charge if it hasn't been and go ahead. That makes sense? Yes, yes. All right, I'm going to call for a vote. The people in this case are Shane and Ryan. All you have to do is say yes, all right? Uh, I'm going to start in this case with Steve Schreiber.
And the vote is yes or no?
Yes or no?
Yes.
Steinberg. Schwartz.
Yes.
Baumell.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I know it's voting time, but I'm confused.
There, there's only two people and there's only two seats.
But that means that one of them is on both bodies.
Uh, that means that Shane is on both bodies, yes.
No. That doesn't make sense to me, no.
Great, uh, Deangels.
Yes.
Dumont.
Yes.
Griesmer's a yes. Hanke.
No.
Uh, Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Evan Ross.
Yes.
George Ryan.
Yes.
Cathy Shane.
Yes.
So the vote is actually 11 in favor, two opposed, no, no abstentions and no absence. Uh, would either, Alyssa, you told, you mentioned your reason. Mandy Joe, did you have an issue? Did you want to discuss?
I would just say I um, supported Alyssa's reasons.
Okay, thank you. So those two are done. Let's very quickly look at the um.
Cathy has a, has her hand up.
Now Cathy.
Okay, Lynn, I just want to say something. Um, I, I almost didn't put BCG on for that reason. And it hasn't really been meeting as a committee. We've been meet, the one time we called it together was the crisis this past year where we had to have everybody there. I mean, and the whole council came. So it's on paper a committee. So I ju, I just want to explain, you know, I put it as a number two when as to ranked and I actually considered not doing it and then we wouldn't have even had two people saying yes. So just, it's a point of clarification on what does this committee actually do?
And and it has never met in the history of this town council. In the past, it used to meet if there was budget crisis. And the reality is we've tended to um, use the Finance Committee. And then when we call a committee, that, when we call a meeting that includes a school committee and the um, Jones Library Trustees for the purposes of dealing with the budget, we refer to it as the Budget Coordinating Committee. People in the future may want to change that or there may be reason to change it, but we now have two representatives. All right, um, on the next memo is the whole issue of um, liaisons. And we had only a couple instances where more than one councillor has expressed interest in a being a liaison. So for affordable housing, Pat DeAngels is the only councillor. The Board of Health, George Ryan has been doing that and Dorothy Pam has expressed interest.
Um, blah, 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 blah. Hold on, got to find my, okay, raise hand.
Yes, Dorothy.
Um, I just was being accommodating, so withdraw my name.
Yep, got it. This is what we did last time. Uh, Licensed Commissioners, Alyssa Brewer is the only person that has expressed interest. Um, Community Preservation Act was Dorothy Pam and Cathy Shane. Either one of you wanted to withdraw?
I could, I could withdraw.
Uh, Council on Aging, Dorothy Pam is the only person expressing interest. Disability Advisory, Access Advisory Committee, Pat DeAngels is the only one expressing interest. LSSC Commission, Dorothy Pam, Steve Schreiber, if needed. So I would say Dorothy Pam.
Well, you know.
I yield to the distinguished councillor from.
I, I was going to yield to you, Steve, so. I say, I was just being obliging to fill those things out.
How about Steve, if you take that on?
Sure.
Okay.
I've got a lot of committees I, I, I attend.
Yeah, and I'm happy to do that.
And then Transportation Advisory, we have DeAngels, Dumont and Schreiber if needed. Uh, Darth, Darcy is the person who's doing it now.
I'd like to keep that if I could.
DeAngels, Pat or Steve, any concerns?
Oh, yeah, yeah, um, second for Darcy.
For Darcy, okay. Pat, any concern? Where is Pat?
I'm here.
There you are, right there.
I've been here. I don't remember putting my name in for Transportation um, Advisory Committee. It might have been a year ago that I did that and I'm not, I don't have the time now because I'm involved with some other stuff like the mobile market.
Following up, then would be serving as liaisons and so this is a motion to appoint following town councillors as liaisons to town, multiple member bodies, under Town Council Rules Procedure, 10.8 councillors as non-voting liaisons effective immediately from the terms expiring January, actually it's January 5th, 2022. Uh, Affordable Housing, Pat DeAngels, uh, Board of Health, George Ryan, Board of Licensed Commissioners, Alyssa Brewer, uh, Community Preservation Act, Cathy Shane, Council on Aging, Dorothy Pam, Disability Advisory Committee, Pat DeAngels, LSSC Commission, otherwise known as Amherst Recreation, uh, Steve Schreiber and Transportation Advisory Committee, Darcy Dumont. Is there a second? Dorothy Pam is seconded. Uh, we're going to quickly take that vote and we're starting with Andy Steinberg.
Point of view is um, it probably should just say Recreation Commission and not say LSSC at all at this point.
Uh, so Andy.
Yes. Taking your vote now?
Yeah, we vote, we're moving to the vote. And it's your turn.
And I vote yes.
Okay. Sarah Schwartz.
Aye.
Shalene Baumell.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
Yes.
Pat DeAngels.
Aye.
Darcy Dumont.
Yes.
Griesmer's aye. Hanke?
Aye.
Aye.
Evan Ross.
Aye.
Ryan.
Yes.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. We're done with that. Um, moving on to um, uh, committee and lia, liaison reports. CRC, Mandy Joe.
Yeah, um, just a couple of short things because I know it's late. I want to first thank outgoing CRC member Sarah Schwartz, Councillor Schwartz. And your contributions have been invaluable and we're going to miss you. Um, but I also want to welcome back, I guess, Councillor Pam, who is rejoining CRC. So, uh, and I want to give you a warning. I hope you're ready for a busy committee calendar and, because it's, it's going to be busy the next couple of months. And housing policy, as you saw on the, the CRC report, uh, please read it. Please get the comments to us if you have any comments. I also want to state, we're hoping to have a council discussion in the near future on this housing policy. So it's not just your only opportunity to, we're, get, getting comments to the committee in writing will not be your only opportunity as a councillor to comment on this draft before it gets a vote in the CRC. Um, I will be working, I'll be working with the president to figure out when that's happening. But there will be something at a council meeting coming and so I just wanted to make that clear. And, and then similarly with zoning priorities, we're meeting, CRC is meeting with the planning board on February 3rd. So um, I, I'll, I'll say that again for Councillor Pam because she might not have had it on her calendar and she'll be a member as of that point, February 3rd at 6:30 um, at the request of the planning board to discuss the zoning priorities. And, and we are working on engagement plans and outreach plans, um, both for councillors and for the public regarding zoning priorities. Discussions are happening. Um, and I just want to give a heads up to everyone that uh, likely part of that will include district meetings. So I hope the district councillors are all on board with talking about zoning at district meetings to get feedback. So I just want to give a heads up, but, but when we get a better definitive plan, I'll definitely bring that to the council to let the council know and present it.
Thank you, just want to clarify, clarification. Thank you.
What was that?
There's somebody listening to a tape. Um, so uh, all of that aside, Mandy Joe, uh, there are district meetings scheduled, I believe, for every district in February. Do you believe it'll be ready for discussion then? You're, you're muted.
Yeah, not every zoning priority, um, because that, you know, you, you kind of have to give the planning department some time to figure out the zoning, you know, drafts um, and stuff. But no, I, I really don't know. The, the CRC hasn't fully discussed a plan yet. I know there's um, some meetings tomorrow um, to discuss some stuff. You know, I've had meetings with our vice chair and um, Dave Zomack, our liaison about this. And so, you know, and CRC will discuss a potential plan, even if the dates are, are vague um, tomorrow. Um, but you know, I'm, I'll, I hope to have more information soon.
Okay, thank you. Um, Cathy, you submitted an Elementary School Building Committee report. Are there, is there anything you would like to highlight briefly from that report? And if not, we'll ask for questions.
Um, yeah, I would, uh, just one major highlight. Um, we received back from the MSBC, these, um, the certification of enrollment and I highlighted in the report what that is. What, so what the School Building Committee will be looking at as we go forward is uh, two possible designs. One is a grade K through five consolidated school where we go from three schools down to two. But they are K through five and the sixth grade moves to the middle school and that would be at about 575. And that would be at about 575 enrollment. And the other would be keeping all three schools and doing one new or one new renovated K through six. With, and in each case, the site would be determined, whether it's Wildwood or Fort River down the road. So we are down to those two enrollment certification choices. And there was a discussion of this initially at the school committee before we signed off. We did raise, in a discussion just before, we had to sign, it was a sign it or come back another year and get in the queue. But there was a discussion of an option of K through six with Crocker being bigger. And unless we were ready as a town to pay for the Crocker share, we weren't going to be given that option as a study design. And we should come back again if that's what we wanted. So we're down to these two choices. We, as a committee, have selected a subcommittee that will be working on the, our requests for proposals or requests for services for an OPM. So that would be the next stage that we would be invited into. And our next meeting, I put the dates in it, is in February after MSBA meets. So we're trying to get ready to be on the street with that as soon as possible after being officially invited in. So I'll take any questions. We haven't put out, the one point, one thing I'd like to say is, we have not yet, as a town or as a school committee, put out a press release or anything that would make this widely known to the town. And one of the advice we heard was communicate as soon as possible and as often as possible. So these are the choices we have if we stay in the pipeline, which we are planning on doing. So there is an implication for the design of our school system here.
Can I ask Kathy, just before I go to questions? You know, this is, you finally got to the point that the committee had done enough that there was something to report. Do you see this as a monthly report or a report that comes when some significant next step has been accomplished?
I think, I think it can be a monthly update. So, for example, next month, it might be, the request for services is out on the street, but it won't have an activity. I think we absolutely would do a longish report, you know, more substantive, when we're, before we're at a key juncture of making a decision. It's something Alyssa had raised in our retreat, and I think that's right, that we would be saying, you know, a month from now, we're going to have to be making this decision. And there'll be a meeting about that. And we will know that. The way the process works, the timeline, it's pretty slow. It's not like, oh dear, next week we have to make this decision. You know, it's in a series of stages with MSBA also signing off on, are you ready for the next one yet? So that, so I think it could be just an update, Lynn, in the future, but it's certainly not every two weeks reporting because it's not moving that fast.
Yeah. There are questions, Harvard, Dorothy?
I have a question with numbers on page one and two. On page one, the second bullet, new K six grade elementary school with 320 students. But on page two, choice three, has a new school with 420 students.
That, I can explain. Okay, I can explain. So I might not have written it clearly. We originally went to MSBA saying, this is what we'd like our choices to be. And we specified 420. And that 420 was a design that allowed a bilingual program and an option of English only in a school. That that was the classroom sizes you needed to make that work. MSBA came back to us and said, not 420, but 320, because you have space in all of your schools to accommodate it.
I got it.
We design your curriculum, because you've got enough space. So just figure out how you're going to do the curriculum. They like the bilingual program, but it's, we're not going to give you the extra space in that school.
Good, thank you.
Moving along, Mandy Jo.
Yeah, I guess one of my questions is on a similar vein. I know these numbers were lower than the committee and the school committee and the superintendent had originally wanted and talked about when we initially applied for the program. And I'm guessing part of that is because the MSBA capacity calculations assume classroom sizes that are larger than classroom sizes in our school committee's policy. And so I guess one of the things I want to talk about or just bring up is what, how is that going to be dealt with going forward? The fact that a 320 K six Fort River assumes capacities that our superintendent generally has reported would be above bursting at the seams, particularly at Crocker, that they say is already ops really full. And they assumed a Crocker study at 50 students more than where it is now. And how does that affect? And these aren't questions you can necessarily answer now, but how does that affect the reimbursement rate if we have to build a school larger than that because we are subsidizing our classroom sizes? And so I think that's just things to keep in mind as we're going forward. And I did want to comment on the subcommittee. I'm glad there's a subcommittee. I noticed, though, that there aren't any, quote, "school members" on that subcommittee, that it's two community members and then three members from the town side of the committee, not the school side. And, you know, I'm not questioning the qualifications of anyone on that committee, I want to say that, but I did notice that that seemed a bit strange for an OPM subcommittee that's going to be picking an owner's project manager for an elementary school building to have no one from the schools on that subcommittee.
So let me just respond, and Steve can respond to. The first task of the subcommittee is drafting the requests for proposals, the requests for services. And we had a full committee discussion of specific items. And some of this is almost boilerplate, where you just fill in some blanks on it. And then we talked about what other elements. And we fully intend to bring that full draft back to the full committee. And so Mike Morris, the others, will be reviewing that. And similarly, the subgroup will be doing interviews and background checks and bringing three or four finalists back to the full committee. So it won't be that all the decisions are made by a subcommittee. So this was a group that was willing to focus on the elements of this initially. So Steve, I don't know whether you want to add anything to that.
Well, I think in principle, the committee members are selected from the various bodies. But in the end, we're one elementary school billing committee. So our, you know, we have the same commitment. So I don't think that we think of it in the way that you're thinking of it, Counselor Hanke, that we're representing the town council on this, but that basically we're representing the school committee, then by extension, the larger community on this subcommittee.
No, I think Paul had his hand up also.
Thank you, Kathy. Mr. Parkman.
So I just want to point out that Dwayne Chamble is an employee of the school district, and the superintendent was pleased that he stepped up to representing the school in a certain way.
Thank you for that, because he's listed as a community member on the list.
He is, but he's also an employee of the school.
Can we skip over Dorothy and go to Alyssa, because Dorothy's already asked a question? Alyssa?
Thank you. I just want to, and I appreciate the report, and like you said, Kathy, I really wanted this, and so I really look forward to continuing to get them. Looking near the end of the report, where it says, we tendatively agreed that the town school committee would issue a press release to regarding receipt of the enrollment certification and next steps. So it's late, even though it's not as late as usual, but that press release has to be much more user-friendly than anything that's been done before ever. Because the place we're at right now makes no sense to people in terms of how we're supposed to possibly figure out, not only the details of what Mandy Jo just talked about, in terms of the numbers, which the numbers don't make sense to what people's experiences are of the school, but also this idea of making this choice between doing something with Fort River and doing nothing with Wildwood, because that's what that choice is, and doing a consolidated school. So people need a much better understanding of, are we just opening this up to the whole world of the community to say, sure, we're going to do a survey, pick one, and then we'll go with that? Or is there actually going to be a drive to figuring out what makes sense for our school population and saying, this is our better choice, and this is when the decision points are, and this is who makes them? So I'm saying you have your work cut out for you in terms of a press release that's going to actually mean anything to anybody.
I don't think that requires a response, but just a, you know, observation. Valene?
Yeah, it was very similar to what Alyssa was going to say in terms of just making sure that the community is moving along with you as the critical decision-making points and what, and maybe even setting them out on the website, the town website or somewhere that this is when what is going to happen. And so, and then, and also having a good plan for, besides press release, how are we going to let people, the stakeholders, teachers, students, parents, how to keep them informed, have a good plan for that.
Okay. Kathy, thank you for your thorough report. We look forward to future updates. Finance Committee, Andy?
I'd be very grateful. Finance Committee is meeting tomorrow afternoon at 2 o'clock. There are essentially three items on the agenda, one of which is the third quarter, or, excuse me, second quarter FY21 Finance Report, that's the regular quarterly budget report. And those of you who are interested in it, it is in the packet that is posted on the Finance Committee page for the council. The other major item, another major item we're discussing tomorrow will be sort of the first time that the Finance Committee is talking about a matter that was referred by the council, and that is the two resolutions that we will have to be considering later in the year regarding wastewater. And there were a number of financial issues that were raised in our first discussion at the Finance Committee, and we want to carry those over and expand on them through the process. And the third is to work on the work plan for the year as requested of all committees.
Okay, great. GOL, George?
Yeah, there's a detailed report in the packet. I'm just going to highlight a couple of things. It's really focused around GOL's annual review of the rules of procedure. We're going to bring forward a couple of proposals with the perhaps fantastic goal of shortening, or helping shorten our meetings. They're fairly small proposals. One is to reduce the time, that may not be so small, but rule procedure 6.3D and 6.3E, it's in the packet. We will bring these together as a proposal to you fairly soon in consultation with the President. We have some future items there as well, so it's basically current recommendations. We have some future items that particularly urge the new members of the committee, Sarah and Darcy, to look at, because as Mandy said, for her committee, our committee has a fairly full plate as well. But we have a number of areas that we, again, are going to be looking at, and again, perhaps bringing some recommendations forward. It's in the packet. We also had a whole host of questions and concerns raised over the course of the year. And so we tried to, we did discuss them, and so they're itemized here. Perhaps the one that I can touch on most briefly, but you can read it for yourself, is emails and texts during a meeting. Can't do it, okay? It's against the rules. Finally, we're working on a larger issue related to the Charter 8.1, open meeting of the residents. We've had great help from the town manager and his staff. We hope to have for you soon both the process and a document that would go with it. There is an issue, you'll find it in the packet, related to the age issue of how old you should be. And so the committee is going to have to wrestle with that at its next meeting and come to some determination.
Kathy, I know they're calling for the next date for JCPC, so there's no report at this point. Correct? Okay. TSO, Darcy?
Yeah, we do not have a report in the packet today. At our last meeting on January 7th, there were no appointments, and we had the first presentation about the DPW stormwater bylaw proposals, which will be reported on when we get further along with them. And at our meeting this upcoming Thursday, it's a meeting of, it's a regular meeting, plus the whole council is invited because we are going to be looking at the North Common Proposal again.
Okay. And we'll have responses to questions the counselors have asked, and those were forwarded to the town manager. Any liaison reports? Alyssa?
It's not a liaison report, it's a question about the GOL report.
I'm sorry, go back to, I didn't see your hand, Alyssa, I'm so sorry.
Not a bit. We were trying to move along. George highlighted so many things there, and there were so many more things he had in the report, but he highlighted the main thing I was concerned about, which was the idea that the charter language could be superseded through a change in the rules of procedure, which I just find to be a jaw-dropping concept. So what does that mean? Because there's a lot of other things we'd change, like in the charter, if we could just change them based on rules, that actually say, like the charter does, 18. I don't have any understanding of what that could mean, and if you're trying to explore doing that when that's not a thing. What does that mean?
I think that's a fair question, Alyssa, and I'm not sure I can answer it. I don't know if any members of the committee want to speak, but that was my understanding of the discussion at the time, that even though the charter language was explicit, there might be some way in which we could get around it. And that's why it's on the agenda for the next meeting, because I have a similar question.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can explain further, since it was my idea, which is not to supersede the charter language. It was a, you could have an open meeting of the residents under the charter, which would require all the signatures or the names to be over 18. And at the same time, you could create, just like we've created these work sessions or these things there, you could create a rule under a rule of procedure that mimics that 8.1 thing, that 8.1 open meeting of the residents, but applies to whatever age we set. So it would not be a charter open meeting of the residents, but it would mimic all of that thinking and be different. So I hope that clarifies that.
That it does, because all the hands went down. Okay, are there any liaison reports? Kathy?
Just a very brief one on the Community Participation Committee. They had a very interesting discussion about how to keep the period of when they'll receive a proposal open longer and provide information sessions so they can increase participation of residents. So residents would know how to apply for funds, they might get some guidance. And it was, pretty much all of them were saying, we need to do a better job on that, so that people can know what things might be eligible, how you go about applying, could get some guidance, are you with it on budgeting? And it was a solid hour and a half discussion on improving that with the goal of increasing participation.
Great. Thank you. Any other liaison reports? All, I think, were up to the town manager's report.
Thank you. So just a few things. We're spending a lot, an inordinate amount of time on COVID vaccine and preparing for it, distributing it. You heard, I appreciate it that the council gave time to Public Health Director Emma Dragon, so she could talk a little bit about the work that she's doing. She's doing a really terrific job, working very successfully with the fire department. As you're probably sensing in your own communities, there's a lot of anxiety about the vaccine. We're getting inundated with telephone calls through the senior center, answer our COVID hotline, you know, literally hundreds of calls coming in, and it's adult children with, of their parents, who are trying to make sure that they don't miss the boat. And we're trying to do as much as we can to help alleviate that. We'll be meeting again to talk more about making sure. to talk more about making sure that we can help people know when they're going to get it. So they don't feel like they're being left behind. And that's a big anxiety for a lot of our seniors especially. A lot of our residents have been returning to town starting today and actually last week for some of the other colleges. And, you know, we have a large number who are living on campus, about 5,500 is the estimate. And I think about 6,700, something like that off campus. And so, but the university has a very good protocol, as does do the other colleges, that you arrive on campus in order to register and to get your keys to your room, actually, you have to go get a test. And then you are quarantined for four days and then you get your second test. And then that, that lets you move forward through the system. And moving forward, I think a lot of you, if you were at the MMA meeting, you saw that Jennifer Moisten was featured as one of our people to help recruit a more diverse workforce for municipal sector. She follows on the heels of Brianna Sunrid, who was featured previously. And so, you know, we've got our rising stars right here in our own town who are out there. The MMA has chosen them to be the faces of working in cities and towns, which I'm really, really proud of. And they both did a tremendous job, obviously. And lastly, I'm starting something new this week, office hours. So if people who don't want to come to a cup of joe or something, they just want to schedule a time to talk, they can set up a time, you know, a designated time on Friday through the town manager's office and we'll have a one-on-one Zoom conversation sort of, and that's available to folks. Also, if, and we're doing our community chat on Thursday. And on Thursday, we're going to focus on Pomeroy Village. So that it gives people the opportunity to ask more questions that if they watch the, the your meeting tonight, they might have additional questions. So Chris Brestrup will be joining me and Brianna on Thursday for that. And so I know you have questions, so I'll turn to those.
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of things. One, I also want to say Brianna did a fantastic job at the MMCA Councillors' Association meeting and presentation too. She was just fantastic there. And thank you so much for the fantastic update of all the Board of License Commissioners have been doing to it was, it was just, I can't say more than it was fantastic to read everything they're doing. Question on Public Works, what's the status of, I think it's a water treatment facility that we funded. I don't, I don't remember the name that we had to get back up online before our permit runs out was one of the reasons we were borrowing for money. So could you just update us on the status of that, if it's been able to be going forward during this COVID time? And then one of the things that struck me in listening to the Community Safety Working Group, public forums where they took some testimony, was the issue a lot of people had with the UMass Police Department. And so I wanted to bring that up as what can you during these UMass meetings or at other times do to speak to UMass about maybe working with our department to address those racial justice issues and all that we're working so hard to address here with the Community Safety Working Group? How do we bring UMass in?
Yeah, so I'll start with that one first. So we, I have notified UMass, our contacts there about this, the interest of the Community Safety Working Group and seeking more information and more cooperation from the UMass Police Department. I don't know where that will go, but you know, but I think that you, you know, as we talked about it at that meeting, they were pretty, the Community Safety Working Group, it's a community safety working group. It's not Amherst Police Department Safety Working Group. And it felt like to me that that was a, that was a legitimate thing to explore. I mean, the challenge for our, the working group is that the issue is so gigantic and that, but they need, we need to focus on what, what we can achieve. And so it's, but they are, they're, the experience is so dramatic and so large. So there, UMass is alert to it. I don't know what their response is going to be. In terms of the, it's the Centennial Water Treatment Plant that continues to move forward on design. The, unfortunately, the costs continue to be what they are. It's a, it's a large number. But that's moving forward and in terms of getting that plant back online.
I mean, Joe, thanks for asking about the UMass Police, because that was, that is very, very prominent in the discussion. Dorothy Pam?
Would it be possible to have the presentations by the staff members be on the town webpage?
For which presentations?
The one you talked about, Jennifer's and Brianna's.
Sure.
Yeah.
Shalini?
Yeah. Thank you again for the MMA participation. I always find that really helpful. And even though it was Zoom, it was super helpful. And I just wanted to bring one thing up that I heard, and I don't know what is, where is the right forum to bring that up? So I'm just going to say it now. The keynote speaker was Wes Moore, CEO of Robinhood Foundation. And the question to him was, how do we get, how do we make anti-racism a priority, given, you know, there's so many different priorities that a town has and how do you get everyone on board or, and what? And so his answer was that we need, it has to start with measurement and that we need to be able to measure, like in our town where the systemic gaps are. And, and so I don't know what is the forum to ask for allocation of funding for measurement, because I don't believe we have. And if we do have measurement, maybe we need to highlight and where we need to measure. So where can, how do we go about having that discussion? About budgeting for measurement of systemic gaps?
I don't know the answer to that. And there are groups, you know, the reparations group is looking at, at different measures. The legal voters have looked at some, certain things as well. I think it's something that, I don't have a good answer for you, I don't, for that, where to go from here on that, honestly.
Yeah, I don't need the answer now, but, but Lynn, can you suggest, like, is that something that where do we, or is it something, Paul, that you will think about and get back to us? Or is it something we're supposed to discuss?
Let me talk about that with Paul and see whether or not there's resources and whether the existing Community Safety Working Group has any of that kind of flowing from their recommendations as well. Okay?
Right. Or even if we can support the reparations for Amherst group, like if they're doing the work and have these. So it's like, we should be supporting them or someone should be doing it, basically, but not redundancy. Like if Community Working Group is already doing it, then let's make sure we support them. Or if the reparations group is doing, then let's support them, but let's just be clear who's doing it, but someone should be doing it. Thank you.
Alyssa?
I was just going to mention that Brianna's slides from the Councillors' Association meeting are already in tonight's packet, thanks to Lynn and Athena. And then the other thing that, and so we should put a link to the video too for both of them. But the other part is that in regards to the UMass, I think that's a multi-layered thing with the UMass Police. I think because of the relationships you have over the COVID discussion, the reopening discussion, that that will help figure out those conversations. But I think it's not just a conversation. I really appreciate you bringing up Mandy, Joe. It's not just a conversation between the two police departments, because many moons ago, I went to both their citizens academies. And there, shall we say, ebbs and flows as to how much they're willing to even talk to each other. And so there, there's this very siloed approach typically, except when a big event is happening. And so finding a way to talk about that, not only with, the chiefs are one thing, right? But it's the actual people doing the work that are another conversation altogether. And so finding a way to work at it from both like the community relations, external relations standpoint, as well as the peer-to-peer police standpoint. I think, I think there's just a bunch of different ways it needs to be approached. If you get pushed back in one area and then for another. Because the thing is, if, if people are having bad experiences on the Amherst College campus, the reality is the Amherst College campus is a private school. The UMass campus is a state school that's this giant property that lots of people have interactions with. And so it's entirely appropriate that they're considered part of our community, even more so than in Amherst and Hampshire. And so finding, you know, whichever levers we might need to pull in terms of those relationships. I'm saying it's not just one thing. It's perhaps a bunch of different ways of approaching UMass to say, we need to be able to have some conversations.
Thank you. Any other comments for town managers' report? This to the town council comments to receive my first president's report. I've asked for questions. I've gotten a couple, particularly about the scheduling for the library and I'll come back with a more full answer on that. Darcy, you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that the ECAC Annual Report was in the packet. And I think Lynn has plans to do something about that at the next meeting is what, what is?
I would, I really wanted to know, we put it in at the last minute. So first of all, you really haven't had a chance to read it. This is the report that's just required from them annually. And I wanted to ask whether the council would like the Chair of ECAC to come to the meeting, a future meeting. Or do you want to wait until they're ready to come forward with their recommendations? Which I believe is in April, isn't it, Darcy?
Uh, yeah, it's supposed to be in April. But, yeah, I personally think that it makes sense to have a very brief update. This is the annual report and the, and there's a funding, funding request in the, in the document.
We'll schedule a brief update on February 8th and continue the report again. Okay? Anything else, Darcy? Okay, Mandy, Joe?
Yeah, thank you for the written report, Lynn. I really appreciated it. Just a couple of comments and questions. Library engagement, I'd love us to consider a weekend. I think the Community Safety Working Group that held one on the weekend showed that weekends can attract people. And so we probably shouldn't avoid that. The meetings with Senator Comaford, since they're not regular, could I request a note that maybe a week or so or a few days ahead of that meeting, those meetings that you just sort of ping us? So that if there's something out that we can get it to you at that time? Because we don't really think ahead to a nebulous, there might be a meeting next month. And with that, just, you know, some curiosities I had. One was what open meeting law changes are being considered for permanent adoption at the state level that might affect what GOL is looking at in terms of their own COVID, moving out of COVID and what changes we can keep and not. And, and then it sounded like from your report that the RCV special legislation has not actually been filed yet. My understanding was it could be filed at any time, so I'm concerned that they are choosing not to file it. I know there's no committees formed, but I would urge you and the Senator Comaford, I don't know whether it has to go through her office or Rep. Dom's office, but whoever files it, I would urge to file it now, not wait another month. I thought it would get filed in early January.
That came up at the very end, literally Paul was running one way, Joe was running the other, and I didn't get to push that. I'm going, what? So thank you. I will follow up on that even well before next month.
Yeah. And then the final thing, the big conversation about the spring farmers market. I guess spring farmers market, I was unsure of the term. I assume this is the farmers market that starts in the spring but runs through November. What's being discussed? I, I guess my concern is it's a council decision if the plan is for a public way or on the common. And so maybe that should be at a committee level instead of just at the town manager, president level?
Yep, agree. And let me just say that it got raised in the bid meeting. And I can say that both Paul and David said, oh yeah, I think we'd better get on that. So yes, a recommendation and then that does have to come because it is a request for municipal way. It has to go to TSO at a minimum. Okay? Anything else, Mandy, Joe?
Nope, that's it.
Any other questions? Yes, Shalini?
I just wanted to thank you, like if it's not like you're doing enough already, now you're creating this long report for us. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and it does bring more transparency and also is pretty scary. I don't think anyone wants to be a president after looking at that report. It's a good way to hold on to, because yeah, that's a lot of work and I really appreciate you. Thank you.
I'm continuing to look for opportunities where, you know, another councillor might go with me to some meeting or that kind of thing. I, I just needed to kind of get a grasp on what does it really look, look like? I, this is the first time I've ever put, it's not even a month. It's only three weeks on paper and I'm going, oh my God. Okay, thank you. That was enough. Shalini, anything else? Okay, let me also mention that on the 8th, we have now invited UMass to come at 5:30. And, you know, this is optional. I mean, we'll call it a council meeting, but it's really, the purpose is one of these information meetings about their spring and how it's going and so forth. But we're also going to use it as an opportunity for updates on vaccination plans and so forth, expanding a little bit and maybe we'll have even more information. But that will be on the 8th and at 5:30. And just to add, Paul mentioned the, we've been pushing them for these numbers and we've got them to get today. They do feel that there's like about 7,500, 7,050 UMass students who are living in the area. And of that, about 650 are living in Amherst. And then they also mentioned that there are about 6,000 unique students. I thought this was quite interesting, who are doing face-to-face classes. And of that, about only 3,100 live on campus. So there's a lot of students who live in the area who are going to campus for classes. And those are the kinds of numbers and information we're asking them to provide. They'll have much, much more solid numbers on the 8th because they begin classes on Monday. I'm looking at Evan, I'm looking at Steve, I'm hoping they'll have classes beginning. And they will also provide us more information about, oh, that, that's the other thing. They are committed to ongoing testing of asymptomatic for residents. They won't do it this week, this coming week because of the students returning, but they will resume it the following week. And I think they're going to be doing as many as three days a week for asymptomatic testing of residents who are not affiliated with the university at all. Okay, that's, and then is there any other councillor comments? And I want to make note that yeah, that was it. Any other councillor comments? Yes.
Just a quick one, Lynn, on what you just said about 5:30 and UMass. Could you provide, I wrote it down quickly, but could you re-provide a sentence by email? Because I'll get the Neighborhood Association to put it in their little updates. Because there's a lot of interest in North Amherst on the students returning, on updates and what's going on. And then we could maybe not have to have a separate District 1 meeting on it. But, you know, but just, so if you give me a sentence, I literally will just send it over so they can say, you might turn on. Okay.
Dorothy?
Very quick question. In my datebook, I had written in on February 8th underneath Town Council, the word vote. But I don't know what it is that we are voting on. I just, could you refresh my memory?
I imagine we're going to vote on a number of things, so I don't know what that one particularly would refer to. I do know that we have two, we have two resolutions coming forward that are being reviewed by GOL this week. Anybody have any other recollection? I I'll, as we put together the count, the agenda will, maybe it'll, maybe it'll dawn on you, okay? Is there any other comment or question at this time? Then I am going to call the meeting adjourned and it is eleven ten.